Good evening. Want to welcome everyone to the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Meeting officially called to order. This is a meeting in person and also via Zoom. So with that, a meeting called to order, town clerk, can you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Singer?
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Here.
Councilmember Luskin?
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Here.
Councilmember Einstein?
Councilman Einstein is on Zoom. Can you hear us, Ben?
He's on mute.
We have the local plan.
Okay. He's fine. Okay. With that, if everyone could please rise, and Lieutenant Perez, can you please lead us in the pledge of leaders?
I would be honored to, sir.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, it's been so long since we've had public attending the meetings. We love it. We love the interaction, and I appreciate everyone taking their time out of a busy schedule to come to a meeting. There's some great important items on today's agenda. But we're first going to start with the local planning agency. The meeting was called for six o'clock. It's six ten P. M. Meeting called to order for the local planning agency. Can you do roll call one more time, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Singer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Here.
Councilmember Luskin?
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Here.
Councilmember Einstein?
Okay. With that, we're, this is one item on the agenda, adoption of an ordinance amending the land development regulation. An ordinance at town council amending the town of Golden Beaches, amending the town code, and ordinance to provide a fixed height for seawalls. Town clerk?
I'm sorry. In, sorry, bear with me. An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinance is chapter forty-six, article for seawall and dots, providing for a fixed height for seawalls, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Okay, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any second?
Second.
Mayor, let me just, for, for the audience's understanding. So this part of the meeting only is to determine whether the proposed ordinance that's being proposed in second reading is consistent or not consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's not to discuss the, the items itself, but because we do have an audience, what we're recommending in the ordinance is a fixed height for seawalls, making some accommodations for defining substantial completion and adding for some leeway for non-conforming dots. We do find that those items are consistent with your comp plan. The ordinance, the ordinance should be recommended, the, the LPA should approve the ordinance for second reading, and second reading will come later on in the meeting.
Correct. So with it, yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
This seawall is only for the intercoastal, not for the ocean.
Correct. That's your question for the day. So with that, any council comments on, on zoning? So with that.
Yeah. Are we, are we talking about, are we reading it, or?
No, no.
We're just. The i, the item is on the regular agenda. This is simply for a fine, a recommendation on approval and finding that it is consistent with your comprehensive plans.
Real chance.
Okay, so it's just on the comp plan, okay? It's just so it's? Yes. Simply consistent with the comp plan amendment? With the comp plan. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion to close the local planning agency meeting. Any a second?
Second.
Okay. This ordinance will be recommended to approve on, when we do the regular council meeting. So we're closing out of the local planning meeting, and we're going back to the regular town council meeting. So first on the agenda is presentations and proclamations. I believe we don't have any, correct? Town manager?
Correct, there's none.
Second is motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal items from the consent agenda or changes the agenda. The only change I have is the public hearing for the special assessment is going to go after town council comments before town manager report. Okay? Anyone else have any changes?
Mayor, just, just for, sorry, go ahead, go through that. Anyone else?
No.
Where does it go?
It goes right after ca, council comments.
Oh, okay.
Which is also, we're also going to be moving item number seven to that public hearing slot, because item number seven is your p, public hearing item. So item number seven will come immediately after good and wel, after council comments. Okay. Also, members of the audience, if you're here specifically to speak on item number seven, I'm going to ask that you not give your remarks during good and welfare. Good and welfare should be any other items that's not subject to the public hearing, because during the public hearing, your comments will be addressed on that item. Good and welfare is always for the good of the order. If you wish to speak on the assessment item during good and welfare, you should, you can, but know that there's a specific time for those comments.
Right, which will be in a few minutes. So go, go on, Doug.
Shouldn't the comments of the council come after the people speak, so they can respond?
No, we, we will, we will. This is just regular town council, comments on, on everything, all business. Okay? So with that, there's, that's the only change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to disprove? Okay. With that, we're going to open up first the good and welfare. So in good and welfare, if you're going to speak, please state your name and your address, and you speak on good and welfare. But if you're here to talk to the, about the assessment, like the town manager said, that will come up in two items. So anyone good in welfare, Lisette?
Nobody but I'm doing.
Anyone on, yes, Dr. Feyman? Just come up.
Don't have to be finger friend.
Before you speak, I want to welcome Dr. Feyman, former council member who spent many years dedicated to town of Golden Beach, and we appreciate you, and it's great to have you back.
Four seven five Ocean Boulevard. Been a resident over thirty years. Just one question. If perchance there's damages to the stormwater system on A one A, I know the DOT supposedly owns that highway. Who is responsible to pay for the damages? Is it DOT? Is it Dade County? Or does town of Golden Beach have to pay for this?
So any damages that are done to the FDOT stormwater system will be paid by the individual who caused the damage. So if there's an accident, then the insurer of that person would go for it when there's damages. Repair, replacement costs, so outside of damages, is, those costs are borrowed by the state of Florida through the Department of Transportation. It is their system, they are required to maintain their system.
So we have not, not, no responsibility financially at all?
If the town of Golden Beach creates damage, so if our public works vehicle breaks the cash basin or we throw a date jewel, my head, a, 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 the head of one of the modules into the system, we, because we caused the damage, we would be responsible. But regular maintenance and replacement, that's the state.
Okay. One other thing, I don't know which department it falls into, but I'm going to say that we need, on the beach, we need cameras. We need cameras. Town, I know, has twenty, thirty, whatever the number is. We have two or three we're lacking. I think the council members and the town, all of the people on the beach, the cameras and, and the security that.
Thank you.
Well, cameras, to begin with, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for good and welfare? Lisette?
No.
No one on, thank you. Okay, with that, moving right along, we're going to go to the mayor's report. Basically, I have four little quick items. First is summer is here. I recommend that everyone, everyone knows that summertime is hurricane season. I recommend that everyone, excuse me, becomes proactive, prepare their homes, fork off a bit if there is a storm. If you need any assistance, you could always call town hall if you have any questions. But I can't urge you, it's enough to be a little proactive versus reactive. We may go three months or four months without a storm, and then suddenly something happens. So I can't urge you enough to get your home ready for the summer, especially if you're leaving town for the summer. Second, quick comments. On Sunday, we had bagels on the beach, it was a great time. If you were there, thank you for coming. If you missed it, I'm sorry, it was a great time to meet new residents. It was a great time, we gave a short presentation I did on the Geo bond. I'm going to go over that in a second, what that entails. There were some great questions, there was great participation. But more importantly, it was great seeing some of, some of the old residents, not old in age, but longer living, longer residents that have resided in Golden Beach and at the same time meet a bunch of new residents. So it was good, I wish the participation was a little stronger. Hopefully, next time we do it, we will do it. You know, it, it's funny, sometime, yesterday, I was out last night walking a dog, and someone said to me, I didn't even know you had a bagels on the beach. And I urged the person to read the newsletter, to look at the website every month. And, you know, we try to be as informative as possible and try to encourage and tell people as much as possible. I mean, we had it on the sign, we had it in the newsletter for several times, we did a flyer. So I, you know, there's only so many things we could do. Maybe rent a plane next time with a banner, bagels on the beach, free bagels, more people will come. But I urge you to, you know, to stay in touch and read the monthly newsletter from town of Golden Beach. It's very, very informative. And the same thing with our website. Our website, our town staff has done a phenomenal job. We keep updating the website, and in fact, I don't know if it's up yet, but there's going to be a link which a, with a little short film on what the wellness center and what the parks are going to look like. So I urge you to go on their website and look at that. Then the next thing I want to talk about real quick is the Geo bond. I spoke about that on Sunday. On August twenty-third, there's a primary election where you could be able to vote for not only the Geo bond, but for the election in Golden Beach. We made a commitment to Dade County Election Board that we're going to have always in the future, hopefully they agree to it, all the elections in Golden Beach. So you don't have to drive to Sunny Isles or to Aventura to try to make it as convenient as possible for our residents. So you'll be able to come here and vote. One of the items on the election, the twenty-third, is a question. Do you vote for the Geo bond for town of Golden Beach or against the Geo bond? What is the Geo bond? The town is trying to issue seven million dollars of a Geo bond, a tax-free bond, to investors, so we can do the following projects. One is a wellness center, a wellness center where this building resides. The final design of the building is not done, but we have a preliminary plan. It's going to be a gym, it's going to be a yoga studio, it's going to be maybe a card room, and also a room for the children, a modern, state-of-the-art wellness center for this community, right here. In addition to that, we plan on using the money to redo the Twiddle Park. When I say redo Twiddle Park, that includes three tennis courts, two regular, one clay, two pickle, two pickleball courts, a basketball court, okay? A tot lot, a state-of-the-art tot lot for children. There's over four hundred children in Golden Beach. A state-of-the-art tot lot, okay? For Golden Beach, and three dog parks for the dogs in Golden Beach. So it's going to be a state-of-the-art park, we're going to make it beautiful, that's part of the Geo bond. Few other items we're trying to put in the Geo bond is the lighting on A one A that lights up the beautiful modules. Those lights are almost fifteen years old. They're so outdated that when a light goes out, we can't even find parts to replace it. So we want to replace the lighting on that. We're also looking to put restrooms. It's not definitive, but we might put one restroom in each of North and South Park, very modern-looking, unisex, ADA-approved bathroom for those parks. A lot of times in the morning, people are walking around, suddenly they say, hey, you need to use the restroom, there's no place to go, or when children are at those parks and they have to go to restroom, parents have to drive them home almost. So I think that's a necessity. The other thing that we're looking to do is two other items. One is the, in the entrance of Golden Beach, to make the fountains a lot more decorative and the entrance a lot more decorative, and also the beach pavilion. The beach pavilion is probably one of our most used, utilized amenities of Golden Beach. And we can always add different amenities to the beach items. We're talking about putting maybe a little area for children to play in, maybe enhance the furniture even further, making some new furniture. Furniture is getting old. So all this money goes toward the Geo bond. Now, the Geo bond, how does that affect me as a resident? Will it increase my taxes? This town council has made a commitment that we are going to keep the mileage rate the same, meaning the portion of Golden Beach, we do not plan on raising your taxes for this. Is one-third Golden Beach and two-thirds city of Dade County. Dade County, if they raise the school or the taxes, that has nothing to do with our bond. But this administration has made a commitment, I can't emphasize enough, a commitment not to affect the tax structure. So we plan on keeping the mileage rate the same. Town manager, myself, and the finance department, for several months now, have been doing budgets and forecasts, not only for the next year, but for the next three and five years. We are confident, based on our revenues, that we'll have no problem paying for not only the building, the debt service of the building, but also the maintenance of the building. Because this building's going to have maintenance, the new building's going to have maintenance. We feel confident, based on our projections, that we will have the financial ability to pay for this. So getting back to the Geo bond, it is not going to affect your taxes. So the beauty part about the Geo bond is it's really going to enhance Golden Beach. You know, it's funny, at the bagels on the beach, I had two residents come up to me and sit, thanked them, thanked me, and thanked the council for doing what we've done, because it's really increased the values of the town of Golden Beach. If you think about it, if we did not do the capital improvement project that we've done over the years, we've done with fifteen million dollars of Geo bond, almost sixty million dollars of capital improvement proj, projects in this town, thanks to this administration, with not affecting your tax bill. If anything, we've lowered your tax rate three ti, four times since I've been in office and this administration has been in office. If we would not have done that, your values would not have gone, or Golden Beach's values would not be a third of what they are today. Yes, during, for the pandemic, everyone's values would have gone up, but we've always been behind Bell Harbor, we've always been behind the, the island, Sunset One, Sunset Two, Miami Beach. Now, with a premier community, we've been in the Wall Street Journal, all good articles, three times in the last month, with record sales, ninety million, a house sale sold for over, or for sale for a hundred million, and another s, a, a house that, for sale. So the reason we're getting these prices, the reason why the values have gone up tremendously is because what we've done to this town, we've added value. This Geo bond is going to add tremendous value to the town. Think about it, we're going to have an unbelievable amenity for the residents. Some residents may not use it, but I think the majority of the residents are going to use it. I've had a dozen or two dozen kids, teenage kids going, can't wait till you guys have a gym. You know, they want to work out. And I think it's a great amenity, and the way we're structuring the, the building, parents, it's going to be all glass, will be able to work out, and their kids could be in the tot lot, and they'll be able to observe the to, you know, the children in the tot lot. So the plans aren't done, we first have to get the Geo bond approved to make sure that we have the ability to do this, and then we plan on doing the project. The vote is August twenty-third. But let me make something clear on that. If the bond does not get approved, the building's not getting done. If the bond doesn't get approved, the bathrooms will not get done. The, all the extras that we talked about will not get done. Yes, we'll do the tennis courts, because it was part of the original project, and ma, maybe two tennis courts, one pickleball, and do some improvements to the tot lot, but we're not going to move it, and we're not going to add green space. So it's imperative that this bond gets passed. There is no negative to passing this bond. There is no negative. It, it's simple as that, it's simple math. You approve the bond, the amenities go up in Golden Beach, and I think the values will continue to go up. Once that, let me finish. The last thing I want to talk about is the assessment that we're about to, to approve tonight. And that's the internet and camera assessment. It's going to be eighty dollars a month, it's less than a thousand dollars a year. What that entails is the painful part of the internet that we've, you know, constructed through Golden Beach, that too is a tremendous asset and amenity to the residents of Golden Beach. We're the first community in the country to offer fiber, one gig up, one gig down, internet through our residents. The first community in the country. That's a tremendous asset. We said from day one, when we did our presentations on the town, and we had multiple meetings here, that the residents were going to have to pay, because we can't afford to pay all of it, portion of the bill. It's eighty dollars a month, less than a thousand dollars a year. But that doesn't only include the internet, that includes where, what a majority of you guys are here for is adding cameras on the beach and cameras on the intercoastal. And I can't urge you enough how much we need to add cameras on the beach, add cameras on A one A, and also on the intercoastal. I know that all the amenities that we've done in the years, granted, they benefit the residents on the beach, but they don't, they benefit the residents inside more than the benefits, than the residents on the beach. This is a chance for us to really give back to those residents and to secure their properties. We've had incidents, just so everyone understands, we've had incidents over the last few months where attempted break-in, some car thefts, some people walking close to the residents where they shouldn't be, where we couldn't even detect who they were on the cameras. And after the incident occurred, we couldn't tell who it was. We couldn't even put out a, an APB to the police officers, what they're looking for, because of lack of cameras and lack of visibility. So ca, this assessment, which is less than a thousand a year, includes cameras on the ocean, cameras on A one A, cameras on the intercoastal, and additional cameras through Golden Beach. I can't stress enough how important this passes, because security, you can never have enough security in a town. And this is just added security for our residents in Golden Beach, and you all deserve it. So with that, those are my mayor's comments. I'm going to turn it over to the council and see if they have any comments. So, I'm sorry, yes?
Two, two simple questions. The council can't approve a bond, it has to go before the, the town?
Voters, yes.
Then when you talk about these entrance in Golden Beach, you're talking about the entrance on A one A, fixing up the, that area also?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I hate to correct the mayor. The council cannot pledge ad verum dollars for a bond. The council can't approve a bond through, through non-ad verum dollars like the other miscellaneous revenues that we have. But we have already pledged our capacity on non-ad verum budget towards bonds. So the mayor, again, I just, I hate to do this, but the council can approve bonds on their own, but they cannot pledge ad verum dollars to those bonds.
Right. And a Geo bond is, is pledged by ad verum taxes.
And what about the, what about the entrance on A one A?
We plan on doing both entrance north and south and the strand. So, yes. No, I was going to turn to council comments, then we'll open up to the public. But I'll start with Councilmember Bernstein.
I think the mayor covered most of the important things. With the Geo bond, I did want to stress what the mayor was saying, which is that when you look at where our values are going right now, and the new homes that are coming up, the new ad verum revenues we're going to be reaching from these, all the new construction, we feel very confident that we're going to have the capacity and the ability to pay these off in the future. So the fact that we can borrow cheap money right now and get these into, into the town and have the ability, availability to use them now versus later, I think it's going to improve everyone's property values, it's going to improve our quality of life. We're going to have more amenities, and I think it's going to continue to increase our property values. So I want to say that, and I also want to say the one thing that I heard, didn't hear him say is that you can vote by mail if you're not in town. So just go online, and you can register, and you don't have to be here to vote. So I think it's pretty important to take that in consideration.
Excellent point. If you need an absentee ballot, you can go on, I believe, our website too, to get an absentee ballot. But I can't urge you enough, because it's August twenty-third, and a lot of people are out of town. And it's important that we get everyone's support.
And, and with the Geo bond, we haven't, we haven't, we're trying to gauge the residents' interest if they're interested in this. And if we are, we'll figure out how to, how to do these. All these different things that we brought up are ideas that we have. We've all communicated, hey, we think we need this done, that done, but if the money gets approved, what wants to say, whether they think we should have this, or what we, how we spend that money. So we're going to be looking for residents' input on how we spend that money. One of the biggest things between the security, the Geo bond and the assessment is taking care of the ocean residents with the cameras. We're, we're realizing security is such a key issue with so many people we've talked to, not just on the ocean, but on the intercoastal inside, so those are some of the things. On some smaller notes, and Dr. Feyman, I completely agree, like, we need the cameras, we're on board with that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Alex, a couple things, just when we're doing these events at the beach, the potluck dinners, or can we try to schedule them like around, it's like three o'clock is, no one's coming out at three o'clock. Can we make these at like six or just earlier times when people are available? And, Lisette?
Councilwoman Luskin?
Well, my sentiments exactly with the mayor and councilmember Bernstein, especially with all the ocean residents here. For years, we've been hearing you say that you kind of feel left out of what's going on on the inside of town. And, I mean rightly so, because you, you never drive through the inside of town. So I think I'm looking forward to cameras and, and really working closely with the people on the ocean so that they really feel part of Golden Beach. You mentioned the website earlier. A website, if you guys don't go on it, you really should, everything is on there, and sometimes it refreshes your memory, and the old council meetings are there. And then just one cleanup note from last meeting, that has nothing to do with the Geo bond or anything else. We've been sitting here talking about security. In the last meeting, we had, at the very end of the meeting, there was some conversation about adding two new holidays to the town. One was June, Juneteenth, and the other was first responders. And we didn't do first responders, and it's probably one of the only times I left the meeting, went home, and felt awful about it. Our police are here, when town hall closes, if anyone needs to call nine one one, Golden Beach is here before nine one one. They stay with you, they've saved lives, they've tried to and maybe haven't made it. But I would like to apologize to the police and almost all the staff of Golden Beach, because anytime anybody is needed in this town, the staff and the police department are there. So as I said at the last meeting, I hope to bring it back someday soon and bring it forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yeah. To the councilwoman's point, I thought the administration took that off, right? We didn't take that.
We voted on it.
I will reserve my comments.
Okay.
Hey, I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry?
I can't hear you.
Oh, no, I was just clarifying a point that the councilwoman said. I, I thought that the administration took that off the, the agenda last time, but I may be mistaken. So just very quickly, again, everyone mentioned the same thing I was going to mention. As the mayor said, he gave a very, you can say, summary of what the Geo bond is. As he said, it's pretty much just investing in the community, making sure our infrastructure is at, is where we want it to be. The debt that we would be taking out, we have the capacity to service it. So again, this shouldn't change anything. Tax, property taxes should not go above the eight point four mils that I've committed to, and I think we've all committed to. So like the mayor said, and, and everyone else said, this is kind of a no-brainer type thing. If you have any questions on that, come see any of us, and we'll, we'll go into details with regards to that. Dr. Feyman, I want you to think that I'm ignoring you. We have the assessment talk, the assessment resolution right now, so we, I'm not going to mention the, the cameras, because we're going to talk about that right now. And then just to continue from last week's, I know that you've made advancements with the, the three nine nine go to Ocean Boulevard, just want to make sure we don't lose track of that, and we come to a resolution with that. That's it for me.
One thing further, just so you understand what the bond question is going to read, I'm going to read the bond question, that's going to be on the ballot, so it's not. What? I'll let Ben talk, I'm just going to read the bond question. It says, shall the town issue a general obligation bond not exceeding seven million in one or more series maturing no later than thirty years from the issuing dates, bearing interest not exceeding the maximum allowable by law payable from ad verum taxes levied by the town for the construction of a wellness center, one or more of the following improvements, including parks, lighting, beach pavilion, signage, and fountain? And then you'll say for or against. So that's, that's what it is. Give me one second, I'll let you speak. But that's, that's the question on the, on the, on the ballot. Real quick, Councilman Einstein, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
What?
Leave me alone, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I on mute now?
Yes, you're fine, go ahead.
Yes, we didn't hear you.
Okay, great. Somewhere throughout the process, I, I guess the town manager, and I guess it'd be appropriate time he'll bring it up, because we're mentioning a lot of things in terms of the, the projects and the capital improvement in the seven million dollar Geo bond, because, and I'm not sure that Councilman Bernstein had mentioned it, as the security cameras were part of that Geo bond for a second? Did he allude to that?
No. I mean, it's, it's.
Okay, fine. I just, I just want to make sure that there's clarification when we did the assessments, because there seems to be, and I'm trying to get clarification in my ear, Mark, and since it's going to be the next item that comes up, when the town manager brings it up, there seems to be a few components to it. The first component, I think, that most people are aware of, is the internet component in terms of a high-speed fiber optic, but we're wrapping it in with a technology component too. The second component, which was alluded to as tier two, was a component where we. was a, um, component where we, it's going to maintain the cameras that we currently have. What is not part of this assessment, as I understand it, it's not for security cameras on the intercoastal, it's not to give us new security cameras on Golden Beach Drive or the ocean. I mean, it, this may be something that we're going to vote about, vote for. It's something that's come up before the council, but I don't think it's part of this assessment that we're doing right now. And if it is, then I need further clarification when it's brought up by the town manager, uh, because there seems to be some confusion here.
Okay, that's it?
And, and it has to, you had mentioned eighty dollars, and there was this seventy-dollar change made to it on our packet. And also, a little clarification as to that when the manager gives his, uh, background with regard to this.
Okay, I'm gonna let the town manager answer that question when we go through the, uh, what, what the assessment is. But thank you, anything else?
Throw it in.
Okay.
Throw it in.
Perfect. So, with that, I'm gonna close council comments, and we're gonna go to the public hearing of special assessment. So, before we get started, I'm gonna let the town manager... Oh, yeah, let, let me read it, there's some letters that were written.
No, 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 we're, we're gonna have it first, read the item.
Right, right.
Make a motion to take, go through the process.
Okay, so with that, uh, town clerk, can you read the, uh, into the item?
Yes, of course. Uh, "Resolution of the Town Council of Town, of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, relating to the provisions..."
There needs to be a motion?
Yeah, I'm in motion, I'm in motion.
She needs to read it first, then a motion. Let her read it first, then a motion.
Correct.
Sorry, go.
Okay, I'll start again.
Start again.
"A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of infrastructure and technology services within the town, declaring the imposition of special assessments for said infrastructure and technology services, providing for authority, definitions, and interpretation, levying and imposing special assessments for said infrastructure and technology services, confirming initial assessment resolution, establishing the method by which the proposed special assessments shall be made, providing for equalization, filing, and lien on properties to be assessed, providing for effect of adoption of final assessment resolution, establishing method of challenge to the special assessments, providing for severability, and an effective date."
Okay, with that, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any a second?
Second.
Okay, now, uh, I'm gonna let the town manager go through what exactly we're voting on and what entails, then, so let me just give you some order. Then there were some letters written, some emails written, that she's gonna, the town clerk will read into record, and then I'll let everyone here speak. So, go on, town, uh, town manager.
So, what's before you this evening, and what the public has asked to give their, um, opinion on or their concerns on, is that we are recommending a special assessment of eighty dollars. I am withdrawing the alternative recommendation. So, it's an assessment of eighty dollars that will cover all of our obligations with Hotwire Communications, what has already been approved, and what we will be asking the council to approve in the future. Currently, our obligations with Hotwire is a contract for your cable, internet, fiber, and in-home managed Wi-Fi system, and a, and a CCTV takeover of our existing system. We are currently negotiating with Hotwire Communications for an expanded CCTV system to include cameras on our ocean and on our intercoastal. We are also negotiating the replacement of the, of some of the existing cameras and adding additional locations on Golden Beach Drive. No, we still do not have a final negotiated contract with Hotwire for those additional services. We do have indicative rates. Our indicative rates with Hotwire for those services, as of today, are an additional forty dollars a month. The eighty dollars does not cover those additional forty. We feel that the town should, should, uh, shoulder some of those costs. And so, we're asking the council to allow tonight, and it's for us to be able to negotiate in the future, is of the eighty dollars, we know that a portion will cover our additional future obligations with Hotwire. I have assurances from a minimum of three council members that, what I call contract number three and contract number four, they would vote in favor of those additional services. Knowing that I have secured enough votes for those additional services, I feel comfortable that the eighty dollars is the right number, and that town would have to burden and carry the cost for the additional resources that we need. I do not think it is fair. And I do not think that this council should pass this on as an assessment to our res- uh, excuse me, as a millage rate number, as a millage increase to our residents. Unlike the GO bond, each home is getting a dedicated gig with an in-home managed Wi-Fi system as part of this deal. Yes, all of the homes benefit from the security camera features. However, because I feel that the one-gig fiber to the home and the managed Wi-Fi system is consistent across the board, I find it unreasonable to ask a more expensive home to pay more millage for that fiber internet. And that's why I'm recommending to the council for the first time in fifteen years that we have an assessment and not a millage rate increase to this program. Let me be very transparent. As a manager, getting a millage rate increase is more beneficial. A millage rate increase would generate more dollars for additional projects. I, however, find it unfair to ask someone who has a more expensive home to pay more for this system when everyone gets the same in-house benefit. Now, there are some council members who do not agree with me on this issue. I do realize, and I, and this is extremely fair, I do realize that whether it's an assessment or a tax increase, I'm still gonna pay more. Yes, you are, but I'm asking you to pay the exact same more as your neighbor for this system. I'm proposing eighty dollars a month, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the, for the year, nine thousand dollars over the course of ten years. I'm not asking you to pay more when the value of your home goes up for this service. That does not mean that in the future, if a council wants to do a millage increase for something else, that it, that it can't do so. The mayor and I have made a, a commitment that we would not ask for millage rate increases to cover our, our costs. The mayor just spent a few minutes talking about the GO bond that you will have the right to approve for all of the other amenities. This item is only on our obligation with Hotwire. And as I stated earlier, our obligation for Hotwire as of today is a managed in-home Wi-Fi system with one gigabit, gigabyte dedicated internet, the CCTV takeover, and we are negotiating two other obligations with them. If the council chooses not to approve those future contracts, then we will lower the assessment. I do not believe that there's any appetite from this council not to provide those additional services through the Hotwire contract. And so, that is what this item is about. This is an item for final passage on setting the assessment that will be added to your tax bill for our obligations for telecommunications and, uh, communication services. That's what the item is.
And you should, just, just to add on one other point, most residents are no longer gonna have to pay, uh, Atlantic broadband bill. So, the assessment...
If you choose, okay, so what Councilman Bernstein is alluding to is if you choose to take, if you choose to have Hotwire provide you with your cable services, your television services, there is no need to continue to have Atlantic broadband.
Correct.
So, if your current Atlantic broadband bill is whatever it is, that should go away. Because you could get your TV services through Hotwire. If you are a loyal...
Right-line?
Customer.
Breeze line?
Breeze line customer, and you wish to have them do your video, you can still do so.
But it also, anyone with the internet now, it's, it's in lieu of the internet payment that you're paying.
Right, the Atlantic broadband, you're currently paying Atlantic broadband for your internet. Once you go to Hotwire, you're eliminating that bill. So, so whether, like, for example, I know I pay two fifty a month on Atlantic broadband. Now, I'm gonna pay Town of Golden Beach eighty dollars part of that. So, I, I'm sorry.
You're wrong on what you said, because if you get the internet with Atlantic broadband, you can get your TiVo service, which I love, where you can stop the program, fast-forward it, record it. If you get the Hotwire, that means that is not compatible with the TiVo, and you're losing the TiVo.
I didn't say any of that. I didn't talk about TV.
But how do I, how do I have twenty-seven TVs and they're all boxes through, through, uh, Breeze wire? So, how are they gonna do this with Hotwire? I don't know Hotwire.
You, you don't have to have Hotwire.
I know, but I gotta pay for it.
Exactly.
You can't operate out with Atlantic broadband. You either have to get both or none.
I can hear both.
I'm personally considering it.
You have to connect it and TV now, because they won't let you separate out.
But you're, you're gonna have a faster internet, though. You're paying for your internet, you don't have to pay for your internet service anymore.
Let, let, let me, let me clarify something, okay? Make it simple. You're currently paying for Atlantic broadband. If you wanna keep Atlantic broadband, you can. If you keep Atlantic broadband, you're still paying for Hotwire. Or you can switch to Hotwire. And thus far, the residents that have switched to Hotwire have, we've had very little issues, and if we had an issue, it's been corrected. The, uh, I've had comments that it's faster, it's more accurate, it's more reliable, and it doesn't go out. Now, your question to the TV, you can keep your TV service for what you have. You don't have to go to Atlantic broadband. I'm talking specifically internet, I mean Hotwire. Okay, so with that, I wanna keep the order, the meeting moving. With that, I'm gonna let Lisette read in some comments, okay, from residents that emailed wondering what it is, and then we're gonna open it up to the public. Just give me a few minutes. Lisette, I know there's a few letters.
Yes, okay, let's start with... This letter is from Mr. Scott Schlesinger to 01 Ocean Boulevard. It reads, "Mr. Mayor, regarding the pricing for the Hotwire install, you originally explained that the price for high-speed cable infrastructure would be borne equally by all homeowners. Clearly, the assessment should be equally distributed amongst all homeowners and not based on value of any one, one owner's home. The infrastructure install benefits all residents equally, so all residents should share equally in, in the cost. This makes the most sense and was always the stated plan. Thanks for considering my thoughts on this matter. Scott Schlesinger, 201 Ocean Boulevard." "Dear Mayor Singer, my name is Laura Rose, I live at 580 North Island. It was my understanding when the, the new Hotwire internet service for the entire Town of Golden Beach was installed that each home would be billed equally. All residents would pay the same subscription price and would not be subject to appraised value, location, or size of home. I hope the billing schedule, what was, that was approved and promised will be upheld. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Best, Laura Rose." Next, we have, "Dear Mayor Singer and Councilmembers, I read with great interest the council's plans for a general obligation bond for the town. My wife Fran and I have lived in town since 1978. We raised our children here, and now it is grandchildren and some great-grandchildren. Over the years, the town has faced so many difficult situations that were so critical to the quality of life we all enjoy here. During 1983 to 1993, I served five terms as mayor, and to this day feel honored to have done so. We had to replace our charter, install sanitary, sanitary sewers, we purchased Suede Park and the West Lot and A1A, to name a few. We had people who were the vocal minority resisting these changes that would preserve, uh, preserve our values and the high quality of our lives. In spite of this, all of the above passed. Golden Beach has a long history of facing these issues and doing the right thing. This bond will provide critical infrastructure that is so deeply needed and necessary. It will keep our town up to date and provide much-needed benefits for its residents, all of which adds to our values. We must support, we must support this and be grateful for the leadership of our town council and mayor, who have done a great job running the town. I wholeheartedly support the passage of this GO bond and urge my friends and neighbors to do the same. Keep up the good work, uh, former Mayor Herbert Tobin." This one reads, "Glenn, it was good speaking with you to review the different options being discussed for billing of the monthly cost for the Hotwire high-speed internet. As I stated on the call, I am in support of having the high-speed internet billed equally per home as promised in the presentation at the beach. I remember a number of around one thousand dollars a year per house is what was discussed. Regardless of what was discussed when we approved it, the, this way of billing same amount per house makes logical sense. The benefit is the same per house whether you have an expensive house or a less expensive house. When one signs up for internet through other companies, the internet companies do not charge more because you have a more expensive home, so why should Golden Beach? Anyway, those are my thoughts, regards, uh, Mr. Michael Klinger." And the final letter, um, reads, "Hi Glenn, thanks for taking my call and answering the various questions my wife Sophia and I had regarding the costs associated with the new Hotwire high-speed internet project the town has undertaken. My recollection from the town presentation to the residents held at the pavilion was that each homeowner would be billed equally approximately nine hundred and seventy-five dollars per year for the new upgraded Hotwire high-speed internet, a relatively nominal amount, annual amount for our community. Moreover, I do not recall there being any discussion whatsoever regarding a distinction, allocation, or proportion of the cost based upon the size or value of your property. While that concept may apply to other issues, it does not apply fairly or equitably to internet service because the underlying internet service provided is the same for each home regardless of size or value. Furthermore, I am not aware of any other cable or internet company, including our previous provider, Atlantic broadband, charging for internet service based upon how big or expensive your home is. That just does not make sense. Thus, I continue to support the concept of each homeowner being billed equally for high-speed internet as the most reasonable and equitable proposal and the one that was presented and promoted by the town and its council members at the meeting. I hope my thoughts on this subject are beneficial. Mr. and Mrs. Michael and Sophia Iyanu, Iyanu, 500 North Island Drive."
With that, those are the comments. Now, I'm gonna open it up to the public comment. One at a, I'm sorry, town man, yeah. When you go up to the podium, please state your name and your address. You can start.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Neil Carlin.
The council is going to test this first, before it is to...
I'm gonna let the public speak, and then the council will, will speak. I'm changing around this time.
All right, Dr. Neil Carlin, 687 Ocean Boulevard, I've lived there thirty-five years. I've come here, I have several things to say, but I'm completely confused now, because the letter that I got said one thing, and Alex is taking things off the agenda. That was on the letter, tier three, tier two, was to pay ninety, now it's paying eighty. Uh, but these are the other comments that I wanted to say. I, I'm against the, I'm against the Breeze line, but, and I have Breeze line, and I'm against the Hotwire. But I, that's not what I'm gonna say. When they, when you originally presented it, you mentioned something about fifty dollars a month for the high-speed internet, which I'm opposed to, but I understand that I have to pay for it. And that's six, six hundred dollars a year. All of a sudden, cameras are intertwined with it, opening the gates, the security systems. That was really never discussed, and that, um, even Councilman Einstein said that. He presented to his constituents, it would be fifty dollars a month. Now, somehow, you, you put in all these other things with this, with this assessment for the fiber optic, which has, which is gonna be passed. The second thing, cameras, everybody seems to have, have changed their opinion. Everybody's for cameras on the beach. The meeting in May 17th, I heard the manager say there are at least two members of the council that are against cameras on the beach. They feel that the people on the beach should have to pay for their own security, and that Golden Beach should not pay for it. I think if that's true, it's short-sighted of the council. I think that's selfish of the council, and I think they're opening themselves up to a huge lawsuit in case anything happens to the people on the beach, because there were no cameras. The people who voted against it, or who were gonna vote against it, that would be subject to a lawsuit also. The third thing is, I don't really understand the purpose of this meeting. The meeting is to pass, to pay for the, uh, the Hotwire. Hotwire has done all this work. So, if, after you hear all these comments, and you decide, we're not gonna assess the people, Hotwire still has to be paid, and then we're gonna be taxed. So, I didn't really understand the purpose of, of this meeting.
I'll, we'll answer everything after everyone speaks.
Should we clarify that, or?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't sound...
I'll let, Alex go.
So, let, let me clarify. So, the letter that you received and the tiers that you received, that's not off the table. So, I'm not sure if that, if that was confusing. So, the proposed assessment, I specified in the letter that you all received in your home, is what we're asking the council to accept. So, there is a tier one and a tier two in that assessment for the eighty dollars a month. The difference between the tier one and the tier two is if the lot is developed or not developed. If you have an undeveloped lot, you pay a lesser fee because you're not receiving the services. You are paying part of the capital cost, but you're not paying for the service. Once the lot gets developed, then you go to the tier that has the services in it. So, that's not off the table. The assessment rolls that was mailed out to everyone is not off the table. I was going to make a, there was an alternative recommendation that we have taken off the table, because after meeting with, with at least three, if not four, of the council, there seems to be overwhelming support that we move forward with a future contract... there seems to be overwhelming support that we move forward with a future contract for additional security cameras on Ocean and Intercoastal and maybe even Golden Beach Drive, knowing that that desire is there, knowing that the rough estimate for that system is fifty dollars a month. Plus or minus, we're asking the council to allow the eighty dollars to be voted on so that we can negotiate those additional services from hot wire communication. It's also incorrect. When we met with both Blue Stream Fiber and Hot Wire at the Beach Pavilion during the presentations, both companies were asked to provide us with a CCTV camera takeover. Cameras have been part of the contracts since day number one. That is not something new to this communication. Now, we have always said since day number one, an assessment up to a hundred dollars. Never more than a hundred. And we brought, we have been working it down and that's why we're recommending today eighty. Meeting our promise to never have something more than a hundred passed. So I wanted to just take that for the record.
That eighty is, is the pound of a portion of it to bring it up. Six that you mentioned.
You'll pay eighty and we have to pay the difference. Whatever, whatever our funding obligations are, we will have to observe.
And that's the difference for the new cameras?
Correct.
On the ocean?
Correct.
Not only on the ocean, but the intercoastal and the ocean and the additional cameras. So we're gonna answer further questions, but Dr. Chapano, I know you're getting paid. You can go up there and speak. You gotta stand, you gotta.
I got a couple of questions.
Well, you gotta get up there and speak.
Where the microphone, Dr. Chapano, sorry. The, the mic for the people at home to hear you.
Where's the mic?
Right here.
Yep, okay.
Just identify yourself and your address.
Five six one Ocean Boulevard, Chapano. This G O bond, tax-free, thirty years. Okay, is it gonna be insured? Uh, what's the rate on the bond? Are we gonna self-insure it for Golden Beach? How do you plan on doing this?
It's, it, it's.
Okay, so the, so.
So legitimate question.
Yeah, okay.
Also, also, are you gonna give the residents the option to first divvy on the bond or is it gonna be open, uh, to the, uh, public?
Okay, so this item, this item has nothing to do with the G O bond. However, if the council.
Can we just talk about a seven million dollar bond?
This item.
Yeah, but, but the item that we're discussing right now has nothing to do, this has to do with the cameras.
I had a question about the bond.
Okay, okay.
I'm talking about the bond.
Okay, we'll, we'll answer that question. Hold on.
So if the council will allow me, I would love to talk a little about the G O bond.
Go on.
So should the August twenty-third, should the August twenty-third referendum get approved? Okay, just like we did for the fourteen point five million dollars, we will be going to market through a competitive bid process, through a competitive purchasing process for the seven million dollars in bonds. They are guaranteed, so they're, they don't have to be insured, they are guaranteed by your ad valorem dollars. Now whoever comes in with the best rates and the best terms is who the council will select. Yes, our residents have the right to purchase bonds, just like you did when the first fourteen point five went out. And a lot of our residents did purchase some of those bonds, just like some of our council members purchased those bonds. But you would purchase them through whoever the, um, secure of the bonds are. So I think the last time it was like to Charles Swabs or whoever it was, but you do have the right to buy those bonds through whoever's selling them.
And, and the bonds, just so you know, Golden Beach bonds are double A plus rated.
I got, I got. The second question is, this seven million, you talked about the improvements here, improvements there. Other than the cameras on the ocean, there's really nothing for the ocean people to give anything from this bond.
Yeah, there's.
The, the, the bottom line is, and the reason I'm here is, I'm up late at night in my cabana, I've been hit twice by people coming in and stealing from me in my cabana. When I go out there at night, I wear a gun, okay, and I'm out there late. And I see the police buzzing up and down, they're never even looking, they're doing a five or ten-minute ride up and down Gold, uh, the beach. Just like you have security inside and on A one eight, I want the same security on the ocean. Since we're paying probably half the taxes anyway. So don't tell me the bond has to pay for more security for me. I sure would be, have the security that you're, you're enjoying inside.
Right, the bond has nothing to do with security.
You just said, we're gonna do stuff with this bond to improve this, improve that.
Right.
On the ocean, uh, on the pavilion, but you didn't say anything about security.
The security is part, just so you understand, the security that we're talking about has to do with the assessment. And we are doing the security. We're adding cameras on the ocean.
That's not enough. We need the same police presence that you have inside and on A one eight, we need it on the ocean. And we're not getting it. We're getting this and that from guys driving up and down for five minutes and that's all we're getting. Okay, I could pick them off from my cabana and they wouldn't even know it. You're laughing, but it's the truth. So the bottom line is, the way you have security inside, that's what we need on the ocean. And we deserve it because we pay our fair care of taxes. I'm done.
Mayor, if I may, just to help Dr. Chapano.
Hold on, don't read yet.
I'm done.
I'm sorry, anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I, I would like to.
Go, go on.
My name is.
Hi.
Take the video.
We, we wanted to speak.
Not yet, go on. We'll open it up to, to Zoom after, promise, go on.
My name is Leah Carmon. I live on four ten Ocean Boulevard. I would like to speak about the two, two things different. First of all, the security you said about the cameras and people coming in and out. Our bathrooms, we use the beach a lot. Our bathrooms, they are always open. Anyone comes in and they use the bathrooms. I suggest that we have a system like maybe the hotel with the card, that only the residents have a card to open the door or a code or something. So not anyone can use the bathrooms. This is one of my concerns. Because every time I go to the bathroom, it's terrible.
Really, really bad.
And, and they go there, they take a shower and, you know, when we go, it's a mess. This is one thing. The other thing is this, I'm really confused. I don't know what to do with this thing. If we're gonna be assessed, if we're not gonna be assessed, if it's by size of the house, by the taxes we pay, what, what is that?
Alex, you wanna read that in the record?
Yeah, so this is the assessment notice that was mailed out to all the homeowners where it says.
Who sent it out?
The town did.
The town.
Is that the tier one, tier two later?
Correct, this is, so the, and these values are based on the recommended eighty dollar a month assessment. So the dog, the value here, um, is the number. So specifically, the town's attorneys were asked to send it out on behalf of the town to all of the residents as required by the state for public notice on an assessment. So the letter that was sent out to all the homes is the letter.
But this is mandatory for everybody. We have to pay for this.
Should the city council vote to approve this tonight? Yes, every single person irrespective of whether or not you use the service will be assessed for the service.
Even if you don't use hot wire?
Inside not to use.
Now, about hot wire, I have a complaint because they did a big mess in my garden. They made holes. They left trash. They destroyed my garden and nobody came. I, I called with, uh, to Lisette. I don't know if it was you, Lisette, the other Lisette. And, uh, she was nice and everything, but still, nobody came to fix it. The garden is destroyed. They left a lot of trash. They are very disorganized and they don't do their job properly. So I wish they could do this better.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll address that.
Thank you.
Go on. One second, Doc, you go.
My name is Marcus Carmona. I live, my, my wife Leah, um, four ten Ocean Boulevard. I just want to tell people, uh, that we have the best, uh, law enforcement in the country. It's the best. And I, I want you people to know that.
We appreciate that.
Leila and, and every officer would help us on the beach, on the, on the front of the, uh, A one A. They are awesome and I, I would like to thank them.
Thank you.
And everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Dr. Feynman?
Stan Feynman, four seven five Ocean Boulevard.
Can you speak a little louder?
What's, Stan Feynman, four seven five Ocean Boulevard. This letter is not signed by anyone.
What's the letter? The notice.
It's a notice.
Who, who composed the letter? To me, it's confusing.
Yeah.
I had to go back several times to figure out first tier, second tier, add this, add that. That's number one. Number two, I agree with Dr. Chapano. Guys buzzing up and down, buzzing down, like, you know.
When you see them.
When you see them, we need a lot of more security on the beach. Number three, there is, before hotline came in, hot wire, hot wire came in, there was a, uh, company that was servicing the town, right, with, uh, cable. When that cable company came into the town, they paid everything. We, we did not give them any assessments or any other monies. They came in, they made a business decision to come to town and then they, we decided whether you wanted to have the internet connection or whatever. Why, we should not be paying hot wire or getting in the business of hot wire for installing that, their line in town. In fact, they should be paying us a fee to come to the town because now they have the option to make money. They can make, they can, you can select whatever you want and run a bill from a hundred and fifty up to four hundred dollars depending on the services. They have made a decision to come to town and they're planning to make money. Why are we supporting them?
I can answer that.
Why are we supporting them? Number three or four, whatever I said. Our assessment, if it ever goes, ever passes, why is it attached to our ad valorem bill? Why are we collecting money for them and having Dade County collect money for them? They're in business, let them bill it. If we have to use any kind of billing and assessment, let's bill it through the town of North Miami Beach. Why North Miami Beach? Because they're collecting money on the water bill. And there's an assessment on that water bill already. And they collect money for us, send the money to us, and that money is put in the, the general fund or wherever it goes. So I'm, I'm against trying to get too many people involved. Let's try to keep it simple. So, and as a matter of fact, I recommend that the vote be not taken tonight. Move on, put it on to the next meeting and try to send out a letter that people could understand and then have another meeting and try to get things straight now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, you wanna answer that and then I'll.
I just wanted, for the record, to, to be clear about two things. One, the, the notice that was sent out is, I know that it looks like a letter, but it's actually a public notice, which is why it's not signed, um, because it's a notice to the community. That's from the town as an entity. Um, and then the second part is, so when we decided as a community that we wanted to have fiber with guaranteed speeds in our city, we offered it to all of the providers, including the existing provider, Breeze Line, which is formerly known as Atlantic Broadband. There was not a single provider that took a bite at the apple without any guarantees. And so the town then wrote a request for proposals and asked the providers to give us their best proposals so that we can ensure that we are a premier community that offers direct fiber to every single home, not copper internet. And the only way that we can get a provider to come in here was if the town were to guarantee a certain number of clients, customers. No one was willing to make these significant investments without any guarantees of being able to recoup their investments. And so in order for us to be the first city in the nation, I'll say that again. In order for us to be the first city in the nation that offers a direct fiber to every home and an in-home managed Wi-Fi system, this was the way that we needed to design it. No provider wanted to take the risk because as you can see, some residents want it, some residents don't want it. No one was willing to take the risk to offer that as part of their business model and that's why we had to go this way.
And, and let me take this step further. Hold, hold on, hold on.
One question.
Go on, go on.
My internet service provider, I pay about forty dollars, fifty dollars. If I, the town is forcing me, why can't I keep what I have? Simple end story.
You can.
Well, then I'm gonna be billed, okay, wait a minute, and why am I gonna be double billed? Why can't I take, I think the town council should have had some kind of provision, an option, given the town, people in the town, the option of joining the, the new company or not.
Yeah, so.
But we know about the option.
So all of our residents are more than welcome to keep their existing providers, whoever that may be. But you do have to share a burden of the cost for having the service available to you.
Can I add one thing?
Hold, hold on, let me, let me say one thing.
Okay.
The reason, let me explain something. One of the reasons why this whole thing came up with was during the pandemic, we received so many complaints because you had multiple users and residents utilizing the Wi-Fi. We had major issues with the Wi-Fi. We've had major issues with the current provider for years. And people wanted to get high-speed internet. This is a top community. This is one of the best communities, like you said, in the country. Okay, we should have the best amenities. One of the amenities is high-speed fiber. Okay, everyone may not agree with us, but the majority of the people, especially the new people that have multiple users at home, multiple children, using the internet, at the same time, you need to upgrade your systems, okay? And this is the state-of-the-art internet system.
And it has to kind of monopolize.
Right, and we're not, right, exactly.
And let me.
Hold on.
So many people in Golden Beach want it and the majority wants it, why can't the few people that don't want it not pay?
It's not how it works.
Why?
Mayor, go on, I'm sorry.
You have a bunch of Zoom people there.
Yeah, let, let, let me, let me let some Zoom people call, but hold on, Councilman Burson, you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I want to add one. Dr. Feynman, this is especially for, for you. Um, if you tried to get a gigabyte right now, the gigabyte was gonna cost about a hundred dollars right now from your current system. What we negotiated was about half of that. So you're getting a much better, higher-speed internet and as, as all the services start going more and more on the internet, we're gonna be needing, everyone's gonna be needing higher bandwidth to be able to do this. And this was a jump in that direction to be able, by doing it with everyone, we got it for almost half the price of what the previous provider was doing. So if you had a gigabyte before, you were paying a hundred dollars, now you're paying fifty. So by us doing it in a bulk rake, we got that bulk rake because we basically said, we're gonna have everybody doing it together.
So with that, guys, please, I got people on, we're gonna now switch to the Zoom. And, uh, who would like to speak, please identify yourself.
Mayor Atticott is first.
Go on.
Mayor Atticott, you're first, then Mr. Bassman.
Good evening to, uh, the mayor and the council. Michael Atticott at one fifty-five Golden Beach Drive. The first thing I would like to know is, maybe Alex can address this. What are the current bonds, and I'll talk about the GO bond that's coming up for election or referendum, but what are the current bonds that the town is obligated to pay and what's the balance remaining on those bonds?
So this item is on the assessment, but I'll, if the council will allow me, so we currently.
I'm gonna go to the assessment after that, but this, this goes into that question.
So, so we still have about fifteen years left on the current funds that were issued back in two thousand and eight. They were refinanced a couple of years after that, um, and we have about half of the bonds still left to pay.
Which is what amount of money?
I, I'm not prepared to answer those specific numbers. I was not asked to be prepared. I can tell you that it's approximately half of the value and we still have approximately fifteen years left. I can give you more specifics, I can give you more specifics through an email, but for tonight, that's the best you're gonna get from me.
All right. The next question, what are the current assessments that are being, that have been assessed and that the residents are currently paying?
None.
Not the one that's, not the one that we're talking about tonight.
None.
Whether it can pass.
None, you have no, you have.
Stormwater.
Stormwater is not an assessment. You need to be careful when you speak, especially council. So you have a stormwater fee that covers your stormwater utility that is not an assessment.
My bad, sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
So the town of Golden Beach has no assessments currently.
Zero.
None.
Okay, so the water bill is coming from North Miami Beach, that's not an additional assessment on top of the water bill that we normally would get?
No, so as a, as an independent utility of the town, your stormwater utility has a stormwater utility cost recovery and it is a fee, not an assessment.
All right, so that's a fee. So right now you're saying there's no current assessment on the residents?
That is correct. The town of Golden Beach currently has, uh, I misspeaking, there are four or five residents that currently owe on special assessment number one that was passed thirty years ago, but that assessment was put to bed. Those residents have just been really slow in paying down that assessment. And I think there's four of them left.
All right, so when we're talking about home values, okay, that's really not relevant unless you're going to sell your home or borrow against your home because you're living in it. So when you, when you say that there's no negative for the G O bond, and I'll get to the assessment in a minute, there's only so much money you can borrow on the ad valorem taxes, okay? We have an outstanding bond now that, that's still up for fifteen years and has the significant balance, I'm assuming. So when we're talking about four hundred and, about four hundred and forty homes, okay, not lots, but the homes, and a thousand dollars per home for this assessment over a period of, I think, ten years is what we have before us. Um, that's four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I understand that there's an argument that that should not be paid from the general revenue. If you could pay that off at four hundred and forty thousand from general revenue because that would be an ad valorem payment. And there are people who don't agree that that should be paid. because that would be an ad valorem payment. And there are people who don't agree that that should be paid from that way. And you want a special assessment so that it's equal across the board. Am I summarizing that correctly? Alex?
I'm not sure I follow you, so I.
Yeah, I I and there's not four hundred and forty, we're talking about three hundred and eighty.
Yeah, and and not only that, but your math isn't adding up because don't forget that the value of the contract for the communication services increases by three percent every year. So I'm not sure where your numbers come from, so I can't validate your statement, so I cannot agree to what you just stated.
And so on on that point, and and this is one of the things I want to clarify because I'm just providing application. What is tier one, the total cost of tier one? What was the total cost?
Ben, I'm still speaking.
Ben, 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 hold on, hold on, Ben, we'll get back to you. Hold on. Uh, Mayor Atticott, can you finish your question?
Yeah, so the GEO bond is is you're requesting seven million dollars for certain improvements. I got I I read the letter, it says, uh, forward-thinking, future-focused. I'm kind of fiscal-focused right now. What I'm trying to understand is a GO bond for seven million dollars doesn't mean you have to borrow that seven million. You can borrow a lesser amount and carve out what you want to do for different projects, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we don't have to actually have seven million dollars borrowed against the town's general revenue from ad valorem taxes. We can say, okay, we want, you know, we want, you know, certain things, whatever, top bar or wellness center, and we can borrow three million dollars instead of seven million, and it would allow us to have more availability for other projects or emergencies in the future, or you have to carry reserve for flooding or hurricanes or whatever it is.
So just so you understand, our reserves, Mayor Atticott, are the highest they've been in since we've started. Our reserves have been, uh, it's the highest. Every year our reserves increase over and over. So the reserves is not an issue.
Okay, so when we're talking about, for example, the construction of the new town hall, which is a very large structure, very large structure, is there a is there a no escalation of costs built into that contract? Or are we going to be faced with, let's say, increased costs from the contractors for materials and labor?
Mayor Atticott, we do not have a current contract for any of that. What we're first trying to do is.
You do, you do, he's talking about the buildings.
Oh, you're talking about the civic center?
That's already paid for.
It's a fixed.
Yeah, the civic center was a fixed cost.
Okay, your your question, Mayor, the question is whether we need to hold the reserves to pay for things like contingencies, for that example.
Mayor Atticott, I'm trying to keep it in order and we're trying to talk about the assessment. You've talked about the bonds after, but we're talking about the assessment now. Do you have any question on the assessment?
So on the current assessment, um, is that is that covering the security cameras that you're talking about as well, or is that in the GO bond?
So Mayor Atticott, as I clearly explained during my explanation of the item, we're asking the council to set aside a a allotment to meet future obligations that we're negotiating with Hotwire with the understanding there are there are at least three, if not four, council members who have given me the green light to continue my negotiations with Hotwire for expanded security cameras on both the intercoastal and on the interior of town. So the eighty dollars has an allocation. It does not cover the full commitment for those future contracts, but it does give us give us an allocation for those contracts.
So we're gonna be charging more then?
It's eighty, yours is the eighty.
No, no, the town covers the rest.
We cover the rest.
Mayor Atticott, do you have any other questions?
So what you're saying, Alex, is that if you do enter into this additional contract for the security cameras with the Hotwire people, then there's not gonna be an an add-on of the as- uh, uh, as you're seeking.
No, correct. We're we're we are we are capping it. We are capping it at the at the tier one and tier two as was sent into the letter. I don't have it in front of me. Miss Monica, can I see your letter again? I'm sorry, I just don't have a copy of the letter.
It's a tier one and tier two.
It's it's for developed for developed for developed lots, it's nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And for non-developed lots, it's three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. I know that people think it is a tier one and tier two. It's not tier one or tier two. It's either you have a developed property or you don't have a developed property. That's what the number is. So if you have a developed home, the home that the assessment, the the value is nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents or three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. The reason you keep on hearing me talk about the eighty is just to give you an an example of how that number was broken down.
Right. So so my my question here is that when you do an assessment, that's gonna be essentially a lien against the homeowner's property, which which has to be paid off if the homeowner's going to sell, correct?
No. No. No, the assessment continues.
With the new owner.
With the new owner, correct?
Let 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 me let me try to answer it. Um, it it an assessment can roll over to the purchaser or it can be paid in full as part of the real estate transaction. That's always a negotiated item in a real estate sale. Um, if you look at.
Understood. Understood. Most buyers are gonna say, I want clear title, clear lien.
It's a thousand dollars.
No, 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 it's not a lien. It's it's not a lien until it's unpaid. It never becomes a lien if it's paid. You only have a lien if you go into default and don't pay it.
Mayor Atticott, I want to keep the questions going with other people. So I think we answered all your questions. So next, please. Thank you.
Then my my, Sari, yes, you could be, Sari Atticott wants to be heard when her term comes up.
Okay.
Okay, why don't you just let.
Sari Atticott, that's.
Why don't you just let her speak?
Yeah, Sarah can speak.
Okay, is Sari Atticott, one five five Golden Beach. I'm just, I'm I'm sorry, I'm getting confused mostly because I can't hear. Um, the the sound isn't very good. But so when Hotwire came in to do the wiring and stuff, they had a sign of contract. Is that contract no longer valid?
No.
So we don't pay them anything anymore. It's all going through this assessment.
You've you've never been, you that's not true, Miss Atticott, uh, uh, former councilman Atticott. You the co- the town has executed agreements with Hotwire that we have always pledged on the the town's dollars, that we've always anticipated collecting the dollars through an assessment for those contractual obligations. None of our residents, let me repeat that. I know that you have put this into the record before and you were and you were found to be incorrect and we proved you to be incorrect. None of our residents have received a bill from Hotwire for these services. And in fact, the bill that you claimed was Hotwire was actually from another provider. There is not a single resident in the town of Golden Beach today who has received a bill for these services. So I would ask.
And we won't in the future?
And not not for the cable, not for the fiber internet. No, you will not. Now.
I get that, but whatever we stream is separate. I got.
Whatever, whatever, and and again, because I know that that some residents are trying to murky the waters, there are residents who have requested a an additional terabyte for two terabytes as part of a bundle package. So you will be billed for one terabyte of internet because you've asked for that as an enhancement to your package. But you will never be billed from Hotwire for our one terabyte or the managed-in-home wifi system ever.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Miss Atticott?
I was just concerned because I had that contracted down this because when this flooded, it was a probably different situation, apparently.
No.
Not at all.
We want advice of it instead.
No.
Not 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 true.
Not true, from day one.
And I respectfully, I respectfully tell you, Councilmember Atticott and Mayor Atticott and to all of our residents, from day number one, from day number one, I have always asked the council to consider paying this project as an assessment, understanding the town's dollars. And for anyone to say otherwise, I take umbrage to that because I've never have asked anyone not to cover it through this manner.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware of that.
Thank you. Any further question?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next. Next.
Um, uh, Mr. Bassman. Mr. Bassman was next, and then after that, it's Mr. Sun.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, because I can't hear you guys very well. I'm trying to hear you, but, uh, good evening, everyone. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Bassman. I'm an owner at six ten Ocean Boulevard. Um, and I first and foremost want to thank all of the, uh, people who are there. I I didn't realize that we could attend in person and 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 I want to thank everybody who sits on the um, the various, uh, the council and and the mayor and and I think I see the helpman there uh, in the back. I I can't really tell from the camera, but it looks like, uh, you Steve, I'm far away here. Um, I I just so you all know, and I I've reached out to to Steve in the past and and to, um, to Alex. And Alex, I appreciate everything that you do. Um, I I've represented associations against Hotwire. I still even have, uh, one going now where, uh, associations have had issues with Hotwire and I've litigated against Hotwire. I I I, as a concerned homeowner, a homeowner should say, have, uh, taken the time to, um, at least in the initial contract with Hotwire, uh, give my thoughts in terms of things that I've seen in 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 several contracts that I've litigated against Hotwire in the past. Um, I I, as I indicated in an email earlier today, it was my understanding, and again, it could be misguided, but I I thought and 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 the way that I interpreted this deal with Hotwire was that the money was there, at least what was told to me for the deal with Hotwire, that the the homeowners were not going to have to pay anything if you wanted the service. You can you can get it. If you do want the service, you don't have to to use it. And as an aside, I just want to say that I did reach out to Breeze Line as well and we tend not, at least according to what was told to me, separate out services. So in other words, if you want, um, only TV and not internet, do you want, at least as of now, from what I was verbally told over the phone, allow you to do it. It's either all or nothing. So if you want, for instance, TiVo, um, you're kind of stuck with having to pay the internet from Hotwire and essentially now Atlantic Broadband if you want that. I I can say that in reading, loaded, the property owners, um, and 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 I'm I'm a practicing lawyer, I I've read it now several times and I've read the emails that were sent off on the issue. Uh, I'm still confused. Uh, I I was confused before this meeting. And I apologize for being late to it, but I may have missed, uh, certain things. I I couldn't hear everything, but I'm a little bit more confused. My understanding in dealing with these on a regular basis is that, and I think someone mentioned this earlier, when you enter into a contract with a company like Hotwire or or Comcast or whoever it may be, and I've represented many associations, as Stephen knows, for for many years, of condominium and homeowner negotiations. Typically, the infrastructure i- it is is negotiated to where that communications company will typically front the cost for, uh, the infrastructure. That's the case when 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 buildings, when condominiums get developed. You know, typically, the 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 communications company will front that cost. The the fact that now we're being told with it with this proposed assessment that each unit owner is gonna have to pay close to a thousand dollars a year for ten years. And and if they do sell their their home, they're gonna have to, you know, obviously, I would imagine, disclose that there's an assessment um, that has to be paid by someone. I I I just disagree, you know, I I know that, look, there's a lot of high-net, um, high-work individuals uh, in Golden Beach and, you know, a thousand dollars for 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 all of us is probably not going to to really impact, uh, our lives. But I I just think that, um, i- it's not appropriate at this point to be asking homeowners to pay a thousand dollars a year and particularly the ones that are not gonna be using Hotwire. Pro, I think, is inappropriate. Um, the the other thing I wanted to point out is that if there were deals that were gonna be made after this initial, uh, technology agreement that I saw, uh, that it indicated that the the at least the initial contract that I looked at was that it was gonna be forty-five dollars, uh, per home that the town was obligated to have to pay. And if my memory serves me right, I think it was a minimum of three hundred and sixty homes that were guaranteed to be, um, paid by the town. Um, if there were going to be additional contracts entered into or envisioned, my my thought would be that those would have been negotiated at that time with Hotwire as opposed to, I think, now, which would be a potential disadvantage, negotiating with them, knowing that we're kind of on the hook now, uh, with these services. Um, I don't know what other companies have been contacted. I'm all in favor of more cameras. I don't want to suggest that I'm not in favor of cameras. But if somehow or another those are being tied in through the assessment, which I think we've gotten kind of conflicting, um, comments on that, I I I don't think that would be appropriate, kind of given what I was led to believe. And again, I couldn't be wrong, but I I thought that the the town was gonna pay for all of, uh, of of the infrastructure and for, um, the the minimum amount due to Hotwire under the agreement.
Okay. Do you have a specific question? Are you, I'm gonna, uh, is that your comment?
I I yeah, I I think that the notice required us to come in, um, with respect to, uh, I I don't have a a question per se, uh, other than, I would like, as I saw, as I sent the email earlier, I would like to see, um, if I'm able to copy of the 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 executed contract with Hotwire to to, as a concerned homeowner, provide, um, comments to it that would hopefully help the, um.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy of the executed contract. I'll make sure that that goes out to you. Okay, with that, thank you. Uh, next.
Mr. Sun.
Mr. Sun. Jeff? Jeff?
Okay, then Mr. Ariel. A Friedler, Friedland. Friedler, Friedler.
Jeff?
No, next is Mr. Friedler then.
He's on mute.
Anybody?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, Friedler.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I wasn't gonna speak. Thank you, everyone, for this. Um, but I heard the comments and I just wanted to, uh, chime in to to lend some support and also support some of the concerns that were raised. In terms of the Hotwire, I live in a community, I think, which was one of the first Hotwire communities in my building. Uh, the service has been great. Um, you know, I I know friends that are on Atlantic and they they can't get the speeds I get. Um, the only suggestion I would give the council and the manager from experiences that I've heard from the board is that your contract should ensure that they're upgrading the the actual, um, access points or or other hardware that they're giving to people because they do get outdated. And there's been struggles with that. So I I would just ensure that you you just want to make sure that, if you haven't, that they're committed to constantly improving those devices. Um, and the other the other point that I wanted to suggest is that, again, like other other property owners, I don't think it's appropriate that, based on the cost of the home, you are charged differently. It seems to me that if you get a gig, you get a gig. The only suggestion, again, I would make for you to look at, based on the experience that we ran in here, is that I don't know if there are access, how many access points are included in each home, but if they're managing the wireless, um, you may run into problems where a room may not have internet and because they didn't have an access point close to it, Hotwire may say, oh, I'm sorry, we only, we're supposed to give you two. That's why I'm, that we've had issues there. So just just as a side. And then finally, I did want to echo the comments, which is why I'm mostly speaking, of the security on the ocean that I did just see the police buzzing along for what it's worth in my limited time. And I I do hope the council takes the comments from other owners seriously, that there should be a dedicated police force for the beach, um, more than one shift every three or four hours or one buzzby every three or four hours, and that if the ocean folks need to pay more, just talk to us. I think you're gonna find the majority are willing to pay more for that security. And that while cameras are great and I'm grateful for that, um, I think that a lot of people would agree to take it to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next.
At at this point, Mayor, I would ask that anyone who is on Zoom who has not spoken, if for whatever reason, you're probably muted, just wave at us or do something so we know who you are. There doesn't seem to be anyone on Zoom. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak.
No, I'm gonna first open it up to the council.
If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, who has not already spoken, this is your chance to do so. There are two, three bodies? No?
No.
Okay, now I go to the council.
So wait, guys.
Can we make the volume louder? Because I can't really hear. I doubt, I heard you a little bit, but maybe for the council's gonna speak, I can't really hear so well.
I I I'll make him speak into the, uh, to the microphone. So with that, I'm gonna, guys, I'm gonna open it up to the council comments, and I'll start with Councilwoman Luskin. Do you have anything to say?
Not, no, not yet.
Councilman Bernstein?
We've covered everything twice.
Councilman Vice Mayor Van Mendeau?
I kind of forgot where we were at this point. So what I would say is, uh, we're we're talking about the assessment period.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Uh, what I would say is, the the assessment, part of this assessment is to get the cameras uh, on ocean and on, uh, on ocean, on the beach and on the intercoastal, which I do. on ocean and on, on ocean, on the beach, and on the intercoastal, which I do think is necessary. I think, as the town manager has explained a couple times already, what we're proposing here is to cap the assessment at a certain point, which I think it's gonna be at eighty dollars. And what the town, and the town's gonna take it, is gonna, the town's gonna be paying for the additional monies that it actually costs to execute these contracts, so we don't put on the residents. Of that, about fifty, fifty-eight dollars is the hotwire internet portion. The rest is the security, Hotwire taking over the CCTVs, adding new cameras, adding the cameras on the beach, on the intercoastal, on ocean, adding the infrared, what do we call it? The infrared, Alex.
The flare cameras.
The flare cameras, for motion sensors and all that stuff, so obviously, it's dark at night. We wanna make sure that people who are coming in at night, you know, we can actually see them. So all of that is part of this assessment here, although it's not fully being paid by residents, the town isn't going to assume some of that cost. I personally think that this assessment is pretty fair. I understand, I do understand, that some people don't want to use the hotwire internet. Personally, I prefer it. I've never been a fan of the monopoly that Atlantic broadband has had here. They've had, you know, they've had the leverage over us for far too long. I'm sure some people have had good experiences with them. The vast majority of people that I've spoken to have not. So I think this was a way to sort of bring in a new player and, and frankly, a superior product in terms of upload and download speeds, especially in today's world where we need it. All homes are gonna be smart homes, if they're not already. So, I'm very much in favor of the assessment. The only thing I would tell you is, I know that there was a lot of comments about the property, the millage rates going up or stuff like that. That's the first thing I'm hearing of it. I do not agree at all about having this being paid through the millage rate. This should be paid through an assessment. An assessment is a fixed thing. A millage rate, once we increase the millage rate, you know, it's not gonna come down. So I am always, I'm never in favor of increasing the millage rate itself. I don't think that people should be paying, you know, more on property taxes for this type of service. That's my two cents here.
Thank you. Very well summarized. So, again, I just wanna, I understand, one other additional comment to the Vice Mayor who summarized what the exact, the eighty dollars entails, okay, is that you have to remember that everyone is currently paying, as Councilman Bernstein said, for your current internet now. So you're paying for Atlantic broadband. My bill is two seventy-five. So my bill hypothetically is now going from two seventy-five to eighty dollars. That two seventy-five that I have with Atlantic broadband is strictly internet. You get the TV, everything else, it's same. So really, by doing this, I'm saving money. And I think the majority of the residents are saving money on the internet. Now, you may add extras, okay, TV, security, et cetera, but that's, that's on you. The internet is part of, is only the assessment. So I just wanna make it clear that, you know, you don't have, if you choose Atlantic broadband, and the residents that have chosen Atlantic broadband, I've heard great things from. I've heard that the service is impeccable, that if there's an issue, they call, they're there right away, or they're there within twenty-four hours, that the speed, the high, the high-speed fiber is like night and day from before to what it is currently, okay? So I've heard only positive things about Atlantic broadband. And I'm, I mean, excuse me, Hotwire. Got me so confused.
Thank you.
Hotwire. And I'm sure we're gonna have issues, okay, there's always issues, but they've given us a commitment on customer service. That was the biggest thing that we hammered them on, was the customer service side. So I think you just need to have faith, and if you look at the whole structure of the deal, it's a win-win situation for everybody. With that, I'm gonna, Councilman Bernstein, you haven't spoke, so you have a comment? Ben?
He's on mute.
Hold on, Ben.
Am I, am I muted?
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna go back to the beginning, cause I need to get a real understanding. We've been talking in terms of monthly bills, in terms of these sizes. And I just wanna get a real understanding of this, because the way I understand this is that we are paying Hotwire as some certain for the total cost of our internet high-speed service. Is that correct?
So we're paying Hotwire for both the service, they're charging, Hotwire is charging the town a monthly door fee for the fiber and managed Wi-Fi system over the course of the next ten years.
Okay, so if we took that ten-year number, does that compute to one point something?
I'm not sure what the one point something that you're referring to.
Well, how much is, how much, how much is the whole cost of that capital project?
So it's not a capital project. So we pay Hotwire, we're paid, we have committed, as you voted on, to pay Hotwire Communications a service fee, starting at forty-five dollars a year, number one. It grows every year by three percent until the cap of fifty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. And that service fee has built into it their cost of recovery, whatever that number, whether they pay a dollar or three million dollars for their infrastructure, we're not aware of what that value is. We have committed to paying a service fee, month, based on a monthly charge with a guarantee of three hundred and sixty homes for the next ten years. That has already been executed. The town is obligated to meet that contract irrespective of what happens tonight.
So if we multiply, if, if, the manager, am I correct, if you take three hundred and fifty-eight and multiply it by fifty-eight dollars a year times ten, would that be the total amount that we're obligated to pay?
No, because in the first nine years of the contract, the value is less. So you cannot take the fifty-eight and multiply it by three sixty and times ten, because then you'll be overpaying the contract.
So is there a, an approximate amount?
So it is, so, so it is.
Fifty-two times whatever, just, it's an average.
It's about, the average is fifty-two dollars a month times three hundred and sixty homes times ten a year. That's the average.
So what is it, so, because it was mentioned a little earlier, and I'm getting a little confused on this. If somebody opted out to pay off the full amount, is there going to be a lien with regard to this assessment?
No, so this assessment is unlike, unlike your, unlike your other assessments, this assessment doesn't get paid off when you sell the home. This assessment is an annual assessment that is voted, that will be voted on annually to the council
Guys, I can't hear. Sorry.
For the services for that year.
So it's not like a lien on your home, is that correct, Al?
Correct.
Because when we had the sewer, I just go back in a number of years, you were here then, when we had the sewer assessment, okay, that went to each homeowner, that was an actual assessment, and when you had that assessment, it was either paid off or assumed by the next homeowner. It was an actual lien.
That's correct, because at the time, the town took on that debt. And so there was a lien placed to guarantee the amount of the debt. This is a service assessment. So each home will, on an annual basis, be reassessed annually for the assessment. So if you go to sell your house at the end of this year, and the assessment for that year hasn't been paid, then you pay it. But in the future year, the new owner, whoever the owner is, will pay that fee. So there isn't a lien on any of the properties unless that year you didn't pay your bill, and then your taxes get sold. This is, this is different.
The second, the second component, the twenty, the balance, what is the balance that brings us to the eighty dollars a month?
So, so again, we, this council has always talked about charging this fifty-eight upfront so that there's no surprises in the future, and then that would leave me twelve dollars for all of the other costs that we're asking the council to consider in the future.
Okay, so the twelve dollars, if I just wanna understand, the twelve dollars is paying for the maintenance of our current camera system, is that correct?
That is correct. At ten dollars, that leaves me two dollars for the future.
Gets to seventy, not eighty.
Sorry, twenty-two dollars. So that leaves me twelve dollars for the enhanced cameras. However, this council is very aware that in year number one, up through year number ten, the obligation for the services, for the communication services, is, is a, is a different value, but we, we set it at the fifty-eight.
One, sorry, one thing we didn't mention, and sorry, Ben, to cut you off, the town is paying for the first year.
Yes.
That's one thing we didn't mention. No one's gonna be being charged for the first year.
It's not operational. It is, that's not true.
It's operational.
That's not true, over a hundred and forty-eight of our, over a hundred and forty-eight of our residents are currently enjoying that service.
Right. He's correct, he's correct. He's correct. It's not completely operational, but, but, yeah.
Go on, Ben, any other questions?
Yeah, yeah.
As I show our questions, I give up the floor.
You what?
Okay, um, there's a question. There's still mention during the meeting about additional security cameras throughout the town, on the intercoastal, and on the ocean, and, and other cameras throughout. This, what we're talking about right now, this assessment, there's a small portion of it that goes towards that, correct?
Yes.
But the rest is the town is paying.
When they, when they look away, because I wanna understand this, I don't wanna be confused, I don't wanna be tall, because the way this is being produced is that ten dollars a month, fifteen dollars a month, twenty-five dollars a month. If we go forward with the security camera within a coastal project and things like that, because, you know, we had another project, we had another camera.
Say that again, sir?
Well, I see Steve's talking to town manager, what he's saying off.
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, when we do this proposed capital, whatever the project is, whatever you want, enhanced security cameras, you know, cameras on the ocean, whatever they might be, I was given a proposed number by the town manager today, and I know it's not extensive. I would reply, at what time are we going to discuss that project?
At year.
Because I know that our former project, our window we had ten years ago, when we had those cameras, you know, we had discussions, they brought cameras to the, to Golden Beach, they showed us these beautiful pictures of how great everything was, and now it's my understanding that, you know, our cameras don't work that well, that they're outdated, they're old, under cover of the ocean, intercoastal, and everybody in Golden Beach having the greatest security possible. But, at the same time, there's a cost that comes with that. And I just want to understand that none of these costs that we're talking tonight about have to do with that enhanced system, is that correct? And if there is a cost that is associated with that enhanced system that we're voting on tonight, tell me what portion that is, and what portion in the future should we vote on an enhanced system of some sort? What we may anticipate will have cost be, I mean, originally, we said like one point two million, and somebody said, you know, more, eight million, it might be more, and then we said, we're not gonna commit to a number, cause we really don't have.
All right, let him answer the question, Ben.
So, so currently, under contract, we have, in year number ten, an obligation with Hotwire for sixty-eight dollars a month. That's the fifty-eight for the service, and ten dollars for your existing CCTV takeover. I have asked this council and this community to allocate an additional twelve dollars to me, so that we can offset our future costs. We have not negotiated final numbers, because we don't know exactly what authority we have as of yet. There are some rough numbers that I shared with you today, so you could be in the light. At a minimum, at a minimum, we're looking at an additional forty dollars a month, so the town will have to carry the additional thirty-some odd dollars. I don't think that there's any doubt whatsoever, as of tonight, that there is a need to expand our securities cameras to the intercoastal and ocean, even if, if that is all we did, if we only added intercoastal and ocean with Hotwire, we're looking at a minimum twenty-five dollars a month. So by asking the council to give me twelve, the town would have to come up with the other thirteen dollars. And we have a commitment from this administration that we will come up with whatever the number is to meet our added services. Councilman Einstein, as you know, we have been working for the last, almost a year now, to figure out exactly what it is that we want. As of the last meeting, I informed this council that I feel that the current system, which is almost thirteen years old, is obsolete, and if it was, if it's time to make improvements, this is the time to do so. And so we're still working with Hotwires and others. I wanna be clear about this. This is very important. I am not taking Hotwire's number and thinking that it's the gospel. We have asked two security companies to give us independent pricing, one of them has already given us independent pricing, to ensure that whatever number Hotwire is giving us is a validated number. We're not just taking a prior provider's number and saying, thank you, we're gonna approve it. We have asked two other companies, security companies, to give us what they value, the system that we want to be, based on, based on specifications and recommendations from our police chief and our police lieutenants. So we're not just gonna take Hotwire's number as if being the final number, we're validating those numbers by giving two security companies to give us their proposals.
Can I ask this question? In terms of the security cameras, are we, as in.
We lost them.
I lost you.
Do I have to say that again? Councilman Einstein, I'm sorry.
Or enhanced security cameras for this town, will, is that the same as this? Or is that different in terms of, is the cost gonna be like two million dollars? Because you mentioned forty dollars a month.
Yeah.
Is that like a capitalized cost? Are we paying two million paid over ten years? Or is that a?
We don't know yet.
How, how should we understand that?
So, so right now, the way that we are negotiating with Hotwire is for the additional security services that we're asking for, both on the intercoastal, on the ocean, and replacing existing cameras and adding additional locations, we're negotiating a, not a capital cost, but a per-door fee for them to carry the burden for the system over the course of ten years. So instead of the town taking on additional debt that we do not have capacity for, we would pay them a flat fee per door for those additional cameras.
Which, which, right there, okay, so let's say it's one million, let's say it's five million, I don't know what the cost is, you know, and right now we have a range of costs. At some point in time, are we gonna work with these cameras? Are we gonna look at the system? Or is this something that the manager will decide upon? Or the mayor's gonna decide upon? Because today, I haven't seen, I've heard about, you know, how these systems work, but are we gonna see what these systems are?
So absolutely, in my fifteen years, I have never brought something to the council that the council has not been able to to see or witness or ask questions on. And I, and, and so let's be, so let's be clear, we will always, we will always bring to the council an item for its approval that specifies, now, you have to rely on your professional manager and your professional police department to specify to our contractors, as we have for security, what our needs are. And you also have to let the open market dictate or explain to us what the new technologies are. As you know, when we brought to you the system thirteen years ago, that was the best technology at the time. Technology evolves every year. And so what we're asking for the provider is to bring to us a proposal with, you know, an affordable system. It's not the best cameras that are out the market, because we can't afford those, but to give us what is an acceptable system for today's date, uh, date, uh, stage in time.
I'm voting today the assessment.
Town manager, the reason I ask this is is because as part of what we're voting on tonight, there is a small, small portion of it. That is looking to the future potentiality of this security system that we're going to have. And or or if if we decide on, um and that's and that's why I ask, because I'm sort of voting on something now. That I haven't seen, I don't know about, and and I understand that there's a caveat with this, is that should we not come forward with it? We will not use that portion of the money for, is that cor- correct?
We we would reduce the.
Correct, that is correct, it it.
By twelve?
By twelve.
Or whatever it is, yeah.
That that is correct, should this cap, well, and and that's also, and that's also, and again, I don't wanna murky the waters, right? But I'm gonna have to. So if the council says, look, we don't wanna e- we don't wanna enter into a contract with Hotwire for those additional services. Those additional twelve dollars aren't obligated to Hotwire, they're oblig- they're obligated for communication services and security services that the town may have. Whether through a Hotwire or ABC company, those twelve dollars would be available to meet those obligations, it's not tied to Hotwire. So if we decide that the contract for communication for ex- for security enhancements, with the exception of the ten dollars that you've already approved. Hotwire is not the best provider, the council is saying, look, we're not interested in Hotwire, go find another company, one of the other two that you've already got prices for. And we can still use those twelve dollars, because those twelve dollars, and this assessment is not to a company, but it's to our cost, at our needs.
Okay, Ben, with that, any any other comment, I mean?
No, I I I I thank you for answering all of the questions, and then the last thing I'd like to leave the public with is that. The other alternative to having this assessment at this time would be to that the town would pay for these items. And um.
An increased mileage.
And that would have to be through, at this point in time, as I understand it, an increased mileage rate in order to have that happen, is that correct?
That is correct, that's good.
Okay, and and the um. Final component, I just wanna understand this, because someone had mentioned that there would be a lien on the property earlier on. There there is no lien on the property, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, that's been validated by our attorney who's been working on this issue, Ms. uh Smith Lala. Who has confirmed in writing that I am correct, that this is a service assessment, and therefore no liens would go on the property.
Okay.
There there there, just so we understand, there's only a lien.
So. For the year.
It there's only a lien if you don't pay your tax bill, okay?
That's correct.
That is.
So so so.
Allison, could you could you just clarify one last thing for me again, because I there is, you said there's a portion that the town will be paying for, can you just? Tell me what that is for and what.
So so as I shared with you in private today, um we know that the cost for additional security services far exceeds the additional twelve dollars. So if there is a if there is an amount that is greater than twelve dollars, the town would have to ch- burden, share that burden and cover that cost. I shared with you privately indicative numbers today as to what those services will be, and there's under no scenario was any of them less than or equal to the twelve dollars.
Okay.
No, is that is that good, Ben?
So and 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 for, just so that people know what's on, because I think it's confused, this thing that we're voting on right now is not for. Ocean cameras, you know, they're they're they're, you know, they're not, they're not anticipating that they're getting ocean cameras as a result of this assessment.
No, but they do know that the twelve dollars are allocated towards a future project that is guaranteed for ocean cameras.
Yes. We said all along that part that part of the assessment was for cameras on the ocean and cameras on the intercoastal. We said that from day one, Ben.
There there there's no, there's, yes, from day one.
From day one, yes.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna read the uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I I want to tell him one day, I listened to him ram along for fifteen minutes, I sat here the whole night.
Go on, I'm sorry.
And I appreciate you being here tonight, Dr. Carlin.
Yeah, I hear you talking about cameras on the ocean, I did hear on a meeting that you wanna put twenty six cameras on Golden Beach Drive, and we have two cameras on the ocean. I know it's.
You're gonna have a lot, one.
How many cameras do you get, a lot to the ocean?
A lot, so so just so just to to help with that, so it's not just cameras, you're getting more than cameras. So in addition to in addition to over thirty three additional cameras, you're gonna have at a minimum nine flare systems. That are infrared heat syncing devices, so that at night when the cameras are not as. Effi- effective as they would be during the day, at night, there are heat sensors that will follow heat and send an alarm to the guardhouse. Then everyone's asking, I I hear the comments over here, we can be paying attention, an alarm will ring for the guardhouse.
Every time the alarm rings, they're gonna send the policeman.
Every time the alarm rings, uh at night.
At night, there's people walking by all the time.
After certain hour, then we move down the key, okay, yes, we will send out a patrol, she'll find out why that person's there.
Yes.
But y- you could, and you can monitor the person as to where they're going, so you're gonna see in night vision where they're going.
Right.
One last question, and I'll be quiet.
Okay, promise?
How many, combination, how many homes are there in Golden Beach?
There's three.
About one, it's like, no, it's about three.
Three eighty five, I think, right?
About four.
Lots in homes?
So if you get the three sixty, why do I have to pay for the fiber optic, because I don't want, I don't use a cell phone, I don't own a computer, I don't want high speed internet.
Yes, it's not.
Happy with what I have.
Okay, so the mayor, the mayor's correct, that in the original plot, there were over three hundred and eighty plots in town. Today, as it relates to developable lots and undevelopable lots, we have three uh, Lori, it's uh Ms. Smith Lala is here on there, I believe the number is three hundred and forty eight.
I'll have you promise them three sixty.
So that's what we, that's where we are, because our loss is gonna be split, and in fact, tonight, we're splitting a lot.
Thank you, so with that, I'm gonna read this resolution into order and then we'll vote on it.
Before you do that, excuse me, before you do that, since you let another member of the public speak, I'd like to make one final comment.
Sure, go on.
So.
Just identify yourself, I'm sorry.
Mike Laiticott, one fifty five Golden Beach Drive, I've heard you say that we have the highest reserve ever, and that I've heard Ben say today, that if we don't pass this, if you don't pass the special assessment. It's gonna come out of the general revenue. So if you have the highest reserve ever, why not just pay it out of the general revenue, because what's happened here is you've signed a contract committing to pay it. You'd have to pay it from general revenue unless a special assessment is passed, but I don't think you notified everyone in advance that unless unless the special assessment was passed, you couldn't enter into the contract.
That's not, that's not, yeah, that's not true, no.
You have to have a, you have to have a source of revenue when you when you add into a contract to pay it.
No, you don't.
And I don't think you told the residents, we're gonna have an assessment when I enter into this contract.
Mayor Atticott, respectfully, I believe that you're trying to murky the issue. We do not have to pledge any revenues to execute contracts on behalf of the town, we're not obligated to do so, and neither were you when you were mayor, so that is that that is not a fair statement to put into the record.
Yeah, we don't have to justify revenues to our contract, so it's a regular business transaction.
And by the way, for the record, since we are talking about what we did pledge from day number one, this administration, and you know this quite well. Has always said that we were gonna seek an assessment to cover these obligations, that was never hidden, we're not trying to pull a cuss one anymore.
Right, so that answer your question, Mayor Atticott?
So so you're saying there was an assessment notice given out before the contract was entered into?
No, no, that's not what I said either. What I said is that we have.
When you enter into the contract with Hotwire, you have to have a way to pay, right?
No, you don't, we don't have to specify.
No, you don't, it's a contract, it's a you, a regular contract that the town ma- we we knew how we were gonna pay it, and that's how we entered into the contract.
Mayor, these questions are not for patients.
My question was, did you let the residents know there was going to be assessment for this contract when you entered into it?
No.
Okay, then it would have to be paid from general revenue.
That's not really true, that's that's not true.
If it's not passed by the assessment.
That's not true.
That that, no, a- at at the, uh let let me just clarify, at the time that these contracts um were entered into with Hotwire. The there was a lengthy dis- A assessment um legislation would be forthcoming to pay for it. So there was um public discussion about the fact that an assessment would be put forward um for to to pay for these services, yes, that.
But was there a contingency, was there a contingency?
No, there is, no, no.
Contingency clause in the contract is said.
No.
If the assessment's not passed, then the contract is void.
No.
Okay, that answered my question.
Okay, thank you, so with that, I'm gonna read the resolution into to the record. It's a resolution of the town council relating to the provision of infrastructure and technology services within the town. And declaring the imposition of a special assessment for said infrastructure and technology services.
Would you like me to read the?
Yeah.
Or just roll call?
No, no, we we've already read it and there's a motion and a second.
We we've read it, okay, so with that, we'll do a roll call.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you, moving on to the next, we will have a town manager report.
I'm gonna keep it short, but I need the council to take, pose attention to what I'm about to state. And for the Councilman Einstein, can you hear me clearly at home?
Listen.
Okay, so I'm, and the reason I wanna be adamant about this is because I wanna be clear what's gonna happen over the course of the next month and a half. And what my duties are as your manager. So every year, I set your military for trim notices, and you ratify your trim rate. Once I set your trim notice, you cannot go higher, you can only go lower. And I wanna be clear about this, because I don't want any member of the council to say that I was unfair in what I'm doing. I intend, as your manager, to set the trim notice this year at a combined mileage rate of eight point four mils. Distributed in a manner that allows me to set the debt service rate to meet, to collect enough money to cover its debt service. And the remaining balance of the eight point four mils to go to the general fund of uh covering costs. Once I set that mileage rate, you cannot increase it, so know that tonight. So if there is a member of this council who intends to talk about military increases or mileage rate, it needs to be happening tonight. Cause once I set it next month, you can only lower it, you cannot raise it. It's the first time that I have to be adamant about it, because there have been some backdoor con- conversations with me about a possible mileage rate increase. So know that I am standing for the record, and you will ratify at your August, and when we get to the day meeting, what I what I said, unless this council orders me otherwise tonight. So that's the first item of the of my report. The second item of my report is that know that we have ongoing capital projects to continue to move forward. I know that a lot of our residents were extremely happy happy when we delivered the stormwater project on Center Island Pump Station. Councilman Luskin, I'm sorry that we had to cancel the Memorial Day event, at Veterans Day, we will open the memo- the Veterans Park, and we'll have a beautiful ceremony. If you haven't been to Veterans, to this bo- Strand Boat Dock, to look at our new Veterans Memorial, you should at night, it is. I mean, it looks, it's very, it's very beautiful, I don't know what word I'm looking for.
Restaking.
Restaking, thank you, so go buy our Veterans Memorial Park at the Strand Boat Dock. Also, this su- Thursday, I will be negotiating with the FOP, the FOP contract, it is our stated goal as an administration. That our co- our salaries for our police become more competitive to our neighboring communities. Um we have um started pre-negotiations, I know that a lot of our residents wanna see our police department uh to continue the forest and to be treated fairly compared to the other cities. So know that the mayor and I have been aggressively negotiating that contract, and the negotiations will be uh this this uh this Thursday. Um also, as it relates to our patrols on the beach, I hear the message loud and clear from our residents, you have my commitment. And the lieutenant is in the lobby listening, we will can, we will increase the amount of patrols that we have on the ocean. Right now, at a minimum, if the weather permits, we are required to have one, one ride per officer, typically we have two to three officers. You have my stated commitment that you will start to see enhanced presence at my, on the beach, that is my word. And if anything you have learned from me this last fifteen years, my word is my bond, so you have that commitment from me. You don't need to pay more money, you don't need to ask for more, officers, you will see an increased number of patrols on ocean, I commit to you that tonight.
Careful with the sniper.
No sniper, mayor, with that, I'm gonna observe for the rest of my manager comments for the um for the August meeting, because I think that we've had a very long night.
Could I just shout out Sally Hayman?
Oh, yes, I wanna thank Commissar Commissioner Bernstein and Mayor Singer for working with Sally Hayman, Commissioner Hayman, Sally Hayman donated. Sally Hayman had, Sally Hayman committed the twenty five thousand dollars for our wall uh project, and today at the bar, at the. Board of County Commissioners meeting, they approved that twenty five thousand dollar allocation, so thank you to Councilmember Bernstein and Mayor Singer for.
Councilmember Bernstein, great job.
Also, it is with sad news that I have to announce that the mayor did veto two of our projects.
Not the mayor, governor, governor.
No, the governor.
Don't blame that on me.
I've been sit, I've been sit the last couple days, so the governor did veto two projects, but.
Thank you for coming.
But I'm pleased, but I'm pleased to announce to our residents that even though the governor vetoed two projects. This administration still secured seven hundred and five hundred thousand dollars from other sources from the state of Florida, so two of those, mayor, that's it from my report.
Okay, with that, uh I'll move on to town attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing.
Thank you, Steve, moving that to ordinance the second reading, ordinance L one.
Even if I did, you wouldn't hear it.
Ordinance of town council in the town of Golden Beach, amending the town code ordinance to provide for a fixed height of seawalls.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances, chapter forty six, article four, seawall and docks. Providing for a fixed height for seawalls, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Any a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
The second?
Mayor, before, before we take council comments, so let me just state that the town. Has directed the town attorney to include in the language for second reading, the words not to, the no more than. After the words exists, under under line fifty one, letter B, we're gonna insert the word no more than. Okay, also, I wanna be clear, and speaking with the town attorney, and this is now part of the record. All non-conforming used seawalls will also receive the same benefits as exist, as new seawalls, as related to the docks. So if a non-conforming seawall, which is to put the three inch overlay, to have a platform dock, it does receive that same benefit. There's no need to change the language, and I'm putting in the record, so if anyone, if we were to ever deny a non-conforming seawall those three inches. They could actually force us to do it, because I'm putting it into the record, the attorney and I both believe that they do get that right. We're not gonna challenge anyone on that, so every seawall will get those three inches. Also, I wanna be clear, because I was confused earlier today, and I apologize, refuse me to Councilman Bernstein. I should've done my research, I was just under the weather, the twenty five percent for significant um in um. Sub- substantial improvement is not a dollar value, I was incorrect when we were speaking earlier. Is twenty five percent to linear feet, so on a hundred seawall, on a hundred foot seawall, if a homeowner were to make improvements to twenty five linear feet. That would trigger the substantial improvement, unlike the rest of our codes that percentages are based on value. This substantial improvement is based on linear feet, so if you choose to make improvements or repairs to more than twenty five percent of the length of your wall. That would trigger the substantial improvement, so for instance, this year, Mayor Singer decided to make uh repairs to over forty percent of the seawall. This would have triggered a substantial improvement, not based on da- dollars, but based on linear feet. So we, the town attorney had done some research, and we concur with him, that twenty five linear, twenty five percent of your average linear feet is the appropriate number. Fifty percent, which is the number that we were talking about thinking it was dollars, I think I thought it was dollars, and I miss and I misrepresented myself today, I apologize. Fifty percent of your seawall length is a very significant uh linear footage to trigger the substantial improvement.
Thank you.
And we feel adamantly tonight that we should keep it at the twenty five, I know that you felt that it should be a little bit higher, maybe fifty, and I don't wanna speak for you. But I want you to know that when we were talking, I was thinking dollars, not linear feet, and I apologize, again, I've been under the weather, and I didn't do my research uh as I should have on this matter.
Okay, can you clarify what that, with that, like if, if you're repairing a seawall?
Yes.
And there's, and part of it, it's it's. It's not just in one, you're not just doing one area, you're kind of going throughout it.
Yeah, that's why, yes, so it says collectively or cumulatively, so if you're doing portions of it.
Five, five and five.
Then together, if if those portions amount to up to more than twenty five percent of the distance of the wall. That would trigger bringing your wall up to the current code.
If you don't, if you don't mind me saying, um and I wrote this just so I'd be more eloquent when I said it. At the last meeting, we discussed that the new seawall and dock requir- requirements would apply only to new homes, not existing. And the rationale was that we didn't wanna force new homeowners whose seawall is functioning to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars plus, I mean, at minimum a hundred thousand dollars for a seawall. Plus the time, and and more likely, if you're gonna do your seawall and your dock, you're probably looking at like a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. We didn't want to force people who's never had an issue with flooding in their yards to be built, to spend this type of money, I mean, we're complaining about. Twelve dollars here, a hundred and twenty dollars a year, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially to forty homes, and um. And, um, you know, I, I think we kind of all felt like that was unfair. And I feel like, to me, the twenty-five percent language is clawing back on requiring existing homeowners to build a new seawall and or docks. And, and I think we can cover this issue with the seawalls that if they're failing, I think we can cover it when we go into maintenance. I just don't think, like, if, if someone has twenty-five percent linear feet where they're, we're fixing up, I don't wanna discourage somebody from doing more work because they're gonna say, oh, if I do more, if I do twenty-four percent, I don't have to rebuild my new seawall, but if I do twenty-five percent, I'm gonna have to build a new seawall. And I just think that we're better off, we can cover this in the maintenance program. But I just, I think that we are, are going around the back and forcing people potentially earlier to replace seawalls. And when I say that, most seawalls are intended for thirty, forty years. So if you've, if you bought a home twenty years ago and you built it up to code, and now, and you've never had issues with it, we're saying, well, if you have to repair more than twenty-five percent.
So what do you think it should be?
I just think like that we should be looking, like Alex and I talked about certain things, and we said, hey, there's, there's a home or two that have failed in the city. And that they've caused issues. But I think if we have a maintenance program where we're checking it out and we're looking at those, and people have the ability to repair them, I don't see why we need to force people to do new seawalls.
But my question is, how do you have a maintenance program if you don't have, the only time you're gonna see a failing seawall is when you go out and they inspect it with their twenty-five percent. Give me a percentage that you feel comfortable with.
Well, we can, I mean, I, I do think that if, if you're non-conforming, we can go in there and we can say, hey, you're gonna go, we're gonna do tests on your areas. And if we find that, that, and we can come up with that language in there, and if, and if you don't improve it, if you don't remediate so that it's working and functioning, then you might have to replace it. But I just think, this is.
So you're saying not use a percentage?
Yeah, this is a draconian, this is a draconian method to me.
This is, okay, let me see if I can help this. We, we are establishing a new height for seawalls. Basically, that's what this thing does, okay? And we're recognizing that there are people out there who have seawalls, and they may be in good shapes. They, they may well be in good shape, okay? They have to do nothing, okay? It's when they come in to do work. You, it's like any, it's like any work on your house. If you're home, you're doing fifty percent of the value, you gotta bring the whole thing up. Now, they may come in and do forty-nine percent to avoid it, you know? But at some point, that there's a threshold when you change the rules, that when you need to now comply. And what we're saying is, you don't have to comply today. You have to comply if you build an entirely new wall, then you'll have to build it to the code, or if you come in.
And I, and I agree with that. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay, so now the question is, um, Ken comes in, he's got a wall that's not as high as it's supposed to be. And you have to do work, or you wanna do work and modify it. At what percentage of work can we say to you, you know what, you gotta bring that wall up to code?
Well, I think, I think when you're going in there and you're reinforcing the wall, if you're reinforcing your existing wall, you're not necessarily building a new wall. Why does it matter? Like, like if we turn around and say, hey, let's just be, like someone wants to be just safe and say, hey, I wanna reinforce all this wall, why, why are you gonna put a percentage on that? In terms of, if you're building a new wall, I get it. If you're going in there and you're taking down your wall and you're saying, hey, let's pour new concrete and let's do that for twenty-five percent, I understand. But I'm saying, this is, this is to help repair.
But Councilman Bernstein, if, if you're spending money to reinforce your wall like you just said, right?
Right.
Don't you feel that you owe it to your neighbors and to the community to bring your seawall cap towards the new requirements of the town? So that your neighbors aren't put at risk for you not spending the money to, to bring your wall into compliance?
Okay, and, and we privately had this conversation, so I guess this is just kind of for everyone else's edification. I'm going through this myself right now. And I, I bought a, we did a seawall twenty years ago.
Well, you're not reinforcing, sorry for interrupting, but you're not reinforcing your seawall, you're just putting a dock.
Yeah, but I'm having, so I went in there, as I, as I went in for my dock, Alex said, oh, you should check on your seawall. So I was like, oh, hey, that's a great idea. And so I went in to, to look at my seawall, I'm like, maybe I should change it. And when I talked to my guy about it, he went in there and had someone do an analysis of it, and he said, hey, you probably have ten years minimum left on this seawall. You might have a lot longer. And with a little bit of repair, you know, I think you should do that as opposed to, as opposed to replacing it.
So what percentage of the repair is it?
I, I don't, I mean, but it's, it's, it's like twenty thousand or fifteen thousand dollars. So when, when he, like, so it's fifteen, twenty thousand versus a new seawall for a hundred and fifty thousand. And so then I said, then Alex said, well, what about if you do, you should mention to him, what if you do a sea cap, like just raise the cap? And he said, look, when you go into your existing seawall that's twenty years old, and you, you first of all put a load on that seawall.
Too heavy.
And then all of a sudden you try to brace it and you have vibrations going in there, that are going in there and changing settlement, you might all of a sudden cause that to be destroyed. So he said, I wouldn't recommend you doing the cap on your thing. Even though it's only twenty years old, even though it's been in a situation, and when I look at my neighbors, I've lived in there twenty years. I've never had water go over my seawall. My neighbors next door to me, I've never seen water go over in their seawall, their seawall. But all of us are, like, all my neighbors in my area are all below where we need to be right now.
Right, but my question to you is, if you, I, I agree on the seawall, I wouldn't put it on either if I was you. But do you, you don't have to raise it, un- unless you say, he's saying, if you do more than twenty-five percent repair.
Well, not twenty-five percent dollar, it's just in terms of linear footage.
Square footage, you have a hundred feet if you do more than twenty-five feet.
But you might be just putting, like, filling here or there all along that seawall.
So increase the percentage.
But, but it's not doing it based on value, it's being done on linear feet. So, so if, if they put injection or do whatever they are, or they put bags.
We could, we could do it on value i- if you want. The problem is, is I think what you're gonna find out is that your wall, how to value an existing, you've basically gotta depreci, somehow, with a, a method of depreciating the value of your wall. You're, you could trigger it. That wall may be worth nothing right now. I mean, it's valuable to you, but in terms of valuing it for the purpose of determining, are you at twenty-five, thirty? You could trigger it right away with your twenty thousand dollars.
But I, but I see his point, 'cause I'll give you an example, hold on. I see his point because Alex, I did tremendous work on my seawall.
Right.
I took out all the rust wood, all the rust, uh, steel and re-poured all that and everything. I mean, I would definitely did more than twenty-five percent, I probably did seventy-five percent. I would have to redo my seawall, correct?
Because, no, because your cap, you have your, you have uni elevation. Your cap, your cap is at our minimum.
All you gotta do is get the height up. You don't have to redo your whole seawall.
But yeah, but on his case, if he had to do minor repair and ice, i- if they had to increase the cap, he's saying it could.
He's almost two NAVD lower than the required, than your requirement.
But I built that twenty years ago based on whatever it was called.
But the question becomes, so the question.
And so did all my neighbors.
But the question becomes, at what point do, and this is, and look, I have no, no, no stake in this. At what point do we start requiring all of the older homes, even if they have nice walls and they're survival for them, to start putting in the cap?
Or more than a cap.
Or more than a cap.
But the other side of the coin, his point, which is very good, is that it might deter people from even fixing a seawall. If, you know, my seawall needs some repair, I'd say, you know what, I'll, I'll repair it. But now if I, it needs repair and I end up, I have to replace the whole seawall, I'm not gonna do it.
Be careful with that argument. I don't, and I don't wanna, and I don't wanna try to compare. We all know what happened when you delayed making maintenance efforts on projects. And we have seen, and I'm not comparing us to Sourceline, but we have seen in this community, two walls slip completely into the intercoastal, putting the neighbors' walls at risk because it pulls it with it when it goes out. At what point do we say, you know what, we understand that it may be costly to do so, but it's time to do so. Because we don't wanna see your wall fail and go into the intercoastal and potentially damage the other two properties. And although lives may not be at risk in this case, we don't, we did see what happened when you prolonged maintenance efforts in other projects.
But.
And so that's why this council directed me to look at a maintenance ordinance that requires inspections.
Yes.
And requires work, and we're doing that.
That, that, that.
But that has nothing to do with.
That's separate.
To, to somebody who's making improvements to their wall and saying, you've gotta do it now.
Well, I just.
And I don't know the number.
And I just, I just feel like the last council meeting, I thought we were very specific saying, we are not going to require new, older homes, non-conforming homes, to rebuild their seawalls.
No, sir, and that's why I called you.
No, what you, what you asked me to do was to go back and come up with a clear definition of what substantial improvement meant, so that you could understand when a person would have to comply.
And why don't you come up with a fifty percent, more than fifty percent of what a, a replacement seawall would cost?
So what are you saying? Repeat it?
So, so we don't know what is an old seawall. I mean, it's not really relevant what the old seawall costs, it's relevant what the new seawall costs. So if a seawall's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix, why not allow seventy-five thousand dollars to be used to repair it, or less? Who's?
Maria said the zoom, they can't hear us.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm following you. So, so the concept is instead of valuing the current wall, you, what you, what you do is you value the repairs as against the cost of a new wall. And if the repairs are gonna exceed fifty percent of the cost of a new wall, then you trigger it.
That seems fair to me.
So if you're gonna build a seventy-five thousand dollar dock, you would have to.
Not dock, seawall.
This is, this is, this is, this is.
And that's part of the problem.
This, this is a situation, the guy's sitting at home, he's never had any issues with the seawall. But because of our new code, all of a sudden, he's now below where we're supposed to be.
He, he, he hasn't had because he's never, because we don't know. He doesn't know if he's had.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, he's never had, he's never had water coming over.
It says over, it's under. The, the issue's always under. But over is very visible.
But my point is.
We don't, we don't have, it, it, understand, nobody who's sitting at home has to do anything to their wall.
Right.
Okay? Under this ordinance. Thank you, guys. All, all the new walls are that way. Now, if he comes in to do modifications to his wall because he needs to, or wants to at some point, okay? That's when we get into, well, okay, how much work are we gonna let you do before we, now that you're coming in to do work, okay?
But, but if you're doing.
How much you're gonna do before we are gonna make you go to the, the right height?
But this almost seems counterintuitive, because if our whole purpose is to create better seawalls, and you're telling some, someone's coming in there to repair their seawall.
Yes.
And you're saying, wait, don't spend this much money, because if you do, it's gonna trigger it.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Don't spend a certain amount. Don't spend a certain amount in linear, don't spend a certain amount based on value, because if you do, you might have to build a brand-new wall. I'm just saying, if we want people to repair their walls, like, why, this, this seems disingenuous for that purpose.
What we really want them to do is we want them to come to the new height.
Yeah.
That is, that is the purpose of this, okay?
Can I, can I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
It's not to repair their walls.
This is the conversation I had with Alex, which was, this, for me, this should go hand in hand with the maintenance, with the recertification stuff. Uh, because at the end of the day, you're right, I agree with you. If we're just gonna, unless we have a mechanism where if someone has to recertify, then, you know, that's where it can trigger. Not, no one should spend, but my thought, and maybe I misunderstood. So if someone builds a new dock, that has nothing to do with this?
No.
It's just seawall.
This is just your seawall.
Not anymore. Before it was? Because I remember.
No, that was, that was our intent originally. But when we defined substantial, when we defined substantial improvements, the dock was not.
Oh, okay, so then I agree with Ken even more. Then I think this is kind of irrelevant. I just, I think we need, just need to do the, the recertification ones, and that sort of takes care of.
So what, Ken, what would you recommend?
I mean, to me, I, I'm not even, let me just relook at it.
So you're just saying all new walls, and anybody who has an existing wall can just repair it? And.
Well, that defeats of our maintenance, that defeats.
No, but we'll, we'll cover it in the maintenance program. We'll look in the maintenance program and say.
But you're gonna have the same issue with the maintenance program, which is when you come in and you tell them, okay, now, give us a report. And it's when they say, well, it's deficient, you're gonna come up with this issue, which is, what percentage of deficiency do you have to have before you go up, as opposed to just a repair? If the person comes in and needs forty thousand dollars worth of repairs, but a new wall's gonna cost them two hundred, are you gonna make, are you gonna let them repair it?
But Steve.
Or are you gonna make them come up to the new?
Can I just make a very obvious point? Can I just make a very obvious point? That's gonna be based on economics. If somebody's saying it's gonna cost me a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a new seawall.
Yes.
Or it's gonna cost me a hundred thousand dollars to repair it, they're gonna, they're gonna make that decision, but why, why do we need to force them?
Because it's not about repair. It's about, understand that the goal of all of these things is to ultimately get everybody to a particular height. That's the policy here. The policy is the height.
But I don't, I don't agree with you, I don't, I don't agree that we need to be doing that now.
Well, then, then you shouldn't pass this ordinance, leave the height where it is.
I don't, I don't agree that you need to take, because we've decided that this is the new number, that we need to take all these non-conforming homes and go around the back and force them slowly under, under saying, we can't, we're not gonna let you repair it. We want you to, we want you to make it higher. I just don't think that's, like, I think we're going, we're clawing back at everything that we wanted to do.
Okay, so here, let's see this. I'm withdrawing this item. We won't be voting it tonight, because what, I think what we need to do is bring a, an item on seawall heights for new developments. And we need to come up with a more appropriate response to address non-conforming walls. Because we need to, we need to look at this, look at the whole picture. How can we allow somebody to put in a hundred and twenty thousand dollar dock, but keep, allowing them to keep a wall that is twenty years old, that doesn't meet our heights, and water over, and let me just be clear, and I wanna say this respectfully to Councilmember Bernstein. Water over your cap is not the issue. It's water from separated caps and seawalls, which is everyone in the mayor's house who had it, and sealing that gap. It's pilings that are cracked, it's echoing that's happening. So what I'd like for us to do is.
But it, but in all fairness, when you say that, if you're giving someone the opportunity to repair it, then that's mitigating those issues. And, and, and this is not what Steve just said. This is not what just Steve's just said. Alex, you're getting away from what he said.
This is a.
Steve's point was, our objective is to get everybody to this new height.
That's correct.
That had nothing to do with making sure that they have a solid or solidified seawall.
Correct.
His objective is to make everyone higher, and I'm saying, I don't think it's fair to pass these on to all these residents, hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get this higher.
So let me ask you this, because if the goal is that all, I think this was your intent coming in here, new walls have to be at the new height.
Yes.
Okay, so this is very simple. Why don't we just change this and say, all new seawalls, instead of, and substantial improvement to existing seawalls shall be constructed at this height?
What substantial improvement?
No, we're not, we're not gonna do that. We're just gonna say, you build a new one, it's at four point five. And we'll deal with.
That's good, right?
Existing walls in the maintenance program.
Okay, so, so if, so if we're gonna agree to that, then I would like to remove letter B and letter C.
Hold on.
And remove the words except for provided in section B below.
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait.
Letter B and C.
And C, and the words except as provided in section B below. And so make this only for new walls.
That's fine.
Is that okay, Councilmember Bernstein?
Yeah, but to your point before, if you have a seawall and you put a new dock in there, we're affording, like you said at the beginning of this.
This has nothing to do with that.
But you, you started this conversation off with, anyone who's doing new docks has the same rights.
In, in the maintenance report, so those rights don't go away, that's, that's already in your code.
So we had, at one point you said to me, you want to discourage people from building new docks of having the same rights that new docks would have. I mean, the, the new, the new seawalls.
By making these ordinance for exist, for new homes.
Okay.
Your dock ordinance applies as it is written today.
Okay. And what I'm saying is if someone does a new dock, though, on an existing seawall, they can still do it at the same level as a seawall, with the three inches that we talked about. Which is the right by everyone, okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Docks, so docks today can be built parallel to the wall with a three-inch overlay or one foot below, all docks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so.
So, so that, that, that's just make sure.
Please read into record to change this?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm trying to get it. So, um, in paragraph A, we're gonna say, all new seawalls, and we're gonna strike, and substantial improvements to existing seawalls shall be constructed at an elevation of four point four two five feet north, above the NAVD eighty-eight. Okay, period, okay? Then we're gonna say, all new docks shall be constructed at a minimum of three, four, two, five NAVD eighty-eight.
Well, you can't say that.
All new docks.
You, because if you have.
Keep the words except for in section B and keep section B.
Okay.
We're gonna eliminate C, we're gonna keep.
Fine, fine.
Except for.
Except for, in section B below.
Yes.
But, but Steve, let me ask you, before you say this, does this, is what you're about to say covering, if someone. if someone has an existing seawall that's lower, and they wanna build a new dock?
Yes.
Yes.
Then they don't have to bring it up to the new height?
Correct, we're saying, we're, we're gonna accept that, okay?
They, they can, existing, okay.
Except, except for provided in section B.
It says, except, except as provided for in section B below, all new docks shall be constructed, okay, now, B below says, where any legal non-conforming seawall exists, which is what will happen when we change these new heights, a new dock may be constructed or substantially improved at an elevation which is not more than one foot below the top of the cap of the existing seawall.
It says which is one foot, not one.
Which is not more than one foot below the top of the cap of the existing seawall.
Oh, that's what you're adding in?
Yeah, that's what we're adding in.
Well, so we're saying that's, meaning that that's the minimum, you can go higher, but you can't go-
And-
Right, I got you. Anyone else have any comments on that?
To clarify, Steve, once we get the maintenance part into this, if the existing seawalls are not up to date, if they're, if they don't pass the certification process that we put in place,
We're gonna go-
none of this applies, they have to bring it up to, even if they're just bringing a dock.
Y-yes, we're, we're, we're- Maybe issue, the issue will be then, what, um, when will they have to meet this new height requirement? And it'll be an issue of assessing the condition and the amount of work that needs to be done, and in that ordinance, it'll say,
And we'll-
if your, you know, if you, if your wall is whatever,
Below, below X, you need to bring it up to the code.
Then, then, then you've got to comply with the four point four two five and rebuild the wall.
Right.
Alright, okay.
Okay. Um, I still think we have to deal with a, here, the definition of substantial improvement to a dock. If you're coming in and building a new dock, we're saying, go ahead and, and build it at one foot below the top of your existing wall.
I, I think the, and that's why I was saying, the economic of it is gonna, like, anyone who's gonna go in there and have to improve their dock, let's say you stand substantially.
Yes.
If they're gonna build a hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna turn around and say, wait, or a new dock is a hundred and fifty thousand? Like, that's gonna force, like, once they get to a certain point, they're gonna wanna build a new, like-
You don't know that, you definitely don't know that.
You think someone's gonna want us to-
Yeah. Yeah, you don't know, yeah, you met people, people-
Why don't you put a new dock and not a new seawall?
Right.
Okay, I think we gotta leave this one as new docks.
Definitely not.
You think they want-
I think we gotta do this just the same way as the other, all new docks.
Save one grand, yeah.
No, no, docks, docks would not apply.
Yeah, docks will apply.
Right, right now, we're, we're allowing docks, um, new docks are gonna have to be built consistent with this increase.
But how, if you have, if you have a lower dock, if you have a lower seawall, and you're gonna have a higher dock?
No.
We already, we already allow, allow for those lower walls. The lower walls, the docks are, the docks are exempt.
Okay, got it.
We already lost that.
Okay.
Does everyone understand?
Yes.
We good? I mean, you're good?
Do we need C then, Alex at all?
Uh, Ken, you're good?
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Einstein, do you have any comments?
No, I think you've exhausted all of the possibilities.
Okay, would that will make a motion, uh, a, a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Mayor?
Motion passes.
On the interest of everyone's state, I'm removing letter M and moving them to your August meeting. If you value, we'll be, lengthy discussion, unless the council wishes to stay here.
This is for the ordinance on the maximum building heights?
The floor elevation?
It's not a problem.
Okay, can I just, before you remove it, can I just give you one thing?
We could keep it if the council wishes, but I think that there's gonna be lengthy discussion.
We don't, I don't need to hear it, but I did, I did wanna bring something, the one point that I heard, um, I got a call from Mickey Marrero, I know he spoke with you.
Yes, yes.
Um, he was just saying that if we're encouraging everyone to go and bring the elevation up,
Not encouraging, requiring.
Requiring everyone to bring it up to a certain height, but you're allowing them to go even higher, right?
Yes.
Why are we, why are we requiring the height to be reduced?
Because you require for all the variances, we're gonna speak on the item and the assistant here the item then.
Okay, I just, I just want to bring that up, we don't need to.
I'm only offering it because it's nine P M. and I know that a few of you have been texting me saying what the hell's going on.
I'm good to put it off.
We have-
I'm good to put it off, I just want to bring it up, in terms of-
No, but you can't, this is tonight, I, I, I just, I'm being respectful-
I just thought maybe we give you some direction.
I'd rather knock it out today.
I'm respect, I'm being respectful of the text sent in.
I, I, I'd rather, I'd rather knock it out today.
I was a first reading.
I mean, we got, we got a lot in August meeting, we got the budget.
First reading.
You know what, it's first reading, let, let's try to knock it out first reading and make the changes.
Yeah, first reading, so item M ordinance is first reading, ordinance of town council, town of Golden Beach, amending the town code of ordinance to provide a maximum building height.
An ordinance in the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances, chapter sixty-six, article three, district regulations, section sixty-six dash sixty-nine point one, sixty-nine point two, and sixty-nine point three, providing for maximum building heights, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Any a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Alex?
Alright, so what this height ordinance does is it sets, um, it's more specifically for zone one. So what it talks about is that if you choose a higher first floor elevation, as you have required for all thirteen variances that you have given on oceans, you have to sacrifice height if you wanna go to a higher first floor elevation. The other item, what the other item does, and I'll talk about it now, because it goes in hand, the other item sets a minimum first floor elevation on ocean, and it gives both lot sizes an allowance to go higher than that minimum should they choose to do so, but they have to sacrifice a little bit in height, and it says for all-
I'm sorry, you were saying to go higher, they have to sacrifice a little height?
If they wanna go higher on the first floor, they have to give up building height. Like you have required for all thirteen other variances that you have approved.
But, in the, in the, in the, I'm sorry.
The way, the, the way you all measure height is from your first floor.
Right.
So you, once, a- as you bring that floor up, um, your house gets to be measured in height from where, the height you bring that floor to, okay? So if you, um, if you decide, because you wanna have more room underneath your home, so elevate that first floor, which you have a right to do here, you, this provides, that you, 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 once you start measuring height, you can't now take the house-
Right, otherwise we'll have skyscrapers and the old, newer houses will-
They, they, they'll be a diff, they'll be a different-
Different shadows, right.
I also think it would be extremely unfair to those variances that you have forced this to, to now give additional capacity to-
Because you've given people the right to go higher, but you've also negotiated with them and said, yeah, but you can't go that high with you. You can take your first floor up, but you can't start measuring thirty feet from there, you gotta come down.
Right.
But, 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 I'm a little confused, are we saying that starts from, if you build from the max, from the finished floor,
Yes.
From the first finished floor, which is where we're measuring now?
Yes. Yes.
That if you start from there, you're gonna have to reduce your height already, or is this if you go additional?
Additional, additional.
Okay.
Yeah, if you stick to the, to the first floor, you're fine.
We're giving you, we're giving you high, we're giving you a high starting point.
But, but this is our, yeah. We're giving higher than we've already had, so this is already gonna be, so these structures are already gonna be there.
Right.
If you wanna go higher than twenty point two, which is our minimum, if you wanna go higher than twenty point two, then you have to sacrifice on your height, on your outdoor.
When we're doing this right-
As we have required for all thirteen variances that you have.
When we've, when we're doing this right here, is the height the same, the height is still the same as it was? Maximum height is still the same as before?
Yes, we're not changing height.
So all we're doing is we're giving people the ability to go a little bit higher, and they're still benefiting a little bit more.
The envelope's the same.
But what they may have to do is they may have a ten-foot ceiling instead of eleven foot.
The envelope is not the same if you go higher than eleven.
Right, well, you're going up with the height.
See, if they take another foot.
If they, if they go another foot from the bottom.
If they go another foot a floor, then, if they got a two-story house, they gotta take six inches out of each story.
But that's if the first finished floor gets, goes up a mo-
Exactly.
Okay, so as long as they stay with the first finished floor.
If you stay at the new height.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good, makes sense. Mickey Marrero might be coming in here and I'll say-
I, I understand, I know.
And we had before, and, and again, we try to be a win situation acceptable.
This is first reading.
Right.
Yeah, i- i- in fact, first reading's not even considered a public hearing, so, um, we don't have to, I know we always open up to public and you probably should, but first reading is just to get the ball going, and if at second reading, we have input from other people
We make any changes, we make changes.
And say, well, you know, don't take a whole foot from me, only take three quarters, you know, w- we may change this to do-
No, we wanna stick to work, what it is.
And effectively, because we've now raised the minimum floor area,
Yes.
these new homes are actually gonna be higher than the ones we gave the variances to anyway.
Correct, correct.
I got you.
We're already giving them hi- higher height.
Right.
Gotcha.
Any other comments?
No.
Ben, do you have any comment?
The first and the second are, hold on, we, we spoke about first and the second, right?
Mayor, Mr. Butter, I know that you're on Zoom, I know that you represent a client that's interested in this item, do you wish to speak, or are you just listening to me?
I appreciate, uh, you letting me know, know, we're just here to listen, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, alright, close it to the, uh, council.
So right now, we're voting on the height ordinance only, we'll get to the floor ordinance, but what this does is this provides that if you take advantage of this additional height, that the next ordinance is gonna give you, then you have to proportionally bring your roof down, okay?
And I apologize, we should've put the-
I know, we should've put them reverse.
So, let, let's roll call on M two.
Einstein, man?
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, go on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just like you were asking, so you have some of these passes where the garages are underneath, and then they, they had this problem, I guess, something was too low, or it didn't work out, is that why they wanna build these passes higher, or how did this all come up?
So, yes, so, when, when, when the Florida building code went to eighteen, and we required it to,
I was gonna move it and answer it.
What we were seeing is that underneath homes on ocean, there was this, this unusable space. And so this council, through a variety of variances, has allowed for individuals to go higher on the first floor finished elevation, so that they can make the space under the home usable, but with limitations, as you know, you're not allowed to have a shower underneath the first, underneath the first floor, you're allowed to have a sink, a washing machine, a dryer, and a gym, a toilet, and a sink.
Cool.
Very cool.
No showers, no habitable spaces. And so what we have found is that there have been thirteen applicants who have asked the council to give them more first, a higher first floor, so they can make that ground level more usable.
So we're saying to them, you can do it, but you can't have more height.
Right, and cut the, the height of the building. Is that good, Ben? Okay, thank you, roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Councilman Einstein?
Motion passes.
Item number M three, ordinance of town council, the town of Golden Beach, amending the town code ordinances concerning finished floor elevation.
An ordinance in the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances, chapter sixty-six zoning, article one, section sixty-six point one, definitions in article four, division two, elevations, section sixty-six dash one oh one, house and garage floors, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Any a second, okay, uh, Steve, you wanna go?
Yeah, yeah, sure, okay, so what this does is actually set where your first floor, minimum first floor has to be on your homes, okay? Zone, um, one is the one that we've been talking about, which gives you the flexibility, zone two doesn't, and three don't have flexibility. Zone two and three, we're setting that first floor at what is called nine feet NAVD, North American Vertical Datum of nineteen eighty-eight, okay? So, your, your first floor i- in zone two and three has a minimum and a maximum, it's fixed, nine feet, that's where it is, and then you're gonna measure your height twenty-seven or thirty feet, or whatever it is from there, okay, two and three. Zone one is where you have the flexibility. The minimum has to be the Florida building code requirement plus two feet. So we're, we're saying your minimum has to be two feet above where the Florida building code has it, okay? And then, we're letting you go up from there, on a smaller lot on the ocean, three point four feet more. Or four point four feet more on a larger lot on the ocean. But if you do that, if you wanna take that extra three and a half or four and a half feet, understand that under that height ordinance, you also have to compensate. You can't go all the way high and then take thirty feet from there, okay, so-
That's where the prior ordinance comes from.
Exactly, that, so that's how they tie together, so this sets the floor. In zone one, it gives you flexibility, in zone two and three, it's set, it's fixed. Everybody will have their first floor at that height, unless they come in for a variance for some unusual reason, and they will all be measured from the same point.
When, when we say zone one, I thought there were different areas in zone one where it's higher, isn't there different, it's all consistent?
Zone one's all ocean.
No, no, I'm saying it's, the ocean is the same on the vertical strands and-
Well, yeah, but you measure from a particular point, what they call a datum, a vertical datum, so it doesn't matter if your lot's a little lower, a little, a little higher, y- you're all measuring, so somebody may have to fill a little bit more, or less, depending on how much sand they have and everything else.
And that's, and the mayor and I got into a very educational discussion on what is this ADD point, because it's not feet from where you stand. It's literally a survey marker that makes all the lots equal.
Yes.
Oh, in the, in the, in the United States, and it's points, one of them is in, um, in Virginia, that is set to measure, and so don't think of nine as nine feet, cause it's not nine feet, it's nine NAVD as measured through a survey.
Right, okay. But it, it fixes it for everybody, so that you're not, you're not dealing with, oh, well, how tall is my lot, or how low is my lot, it, it's at a fixed elevation.
I mean, it's brilliant idea, if you think about it, they just came up with it in the what, fifty years ago?
Oh, uh, no, huh, hun, uh, over hundred years, a hundred and fifty years ago.
Hundreds.
No, but it's started nineteen eighty-nine.
And, and here's where the difference is. We used to, in Golden Beach, use NGVD.
Yeah, NGVD.
We're no longer going to NGVD, we're standardizing to NAVD, and there is a calculation to convert NAVD to NGVD, and we're gonna be addressing that in future codes, but it's plus or minus one point five one on average in town.
Right.
There are some areas of towns with a little bit more than that, but we're gonna standardize that as well.
Okay, with that, any, uh, council comments?
And again, this is first reading.
First reading.
We'll take whatever input people wanna bring to us.
Councilman Einstein, do you have any comments? With that, close it to the council roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Okay, Quagga, reduce your resolution, there are none. Uh, town manager, would you like to give us some project updates?
No report.
No report?
Great.
Okay, item, uh, consent agenda, item four and five, official minutes of the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular town council meeting, resolution of town council authorizing the purchase of one Parallels, uh, Palauers Ranger and one, uh, Sportsman Police Vehicle. All in favor of the consent agenda, say yea.
Yeah.
Anyone to approve? Consent agenda passes, item number six, under, uh, Quagga, or resu, I mean, under town resolution, Q six, a resolution of town council approving a waiver of plat for three ninety-three Center Island Drive.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving an application for waiver of plat for the property located at three nine three Center Island Drive, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any a second?
Second.
So mayor, what this item does, as you know, our code requires that the waiver process starts with your manager's office, and then you find it that, that our work is concurrent with our code. Um, this lot is an irregular shaped lot where the frontage is judged at the center. We have made sure that the applicant meets all the conditions of your code, and we recommend favorable approval of this waiver.
It's a lot split.
Good, uh, any comments from the council? Councilman Einstein?
Listen, um, town manager, um, just on that lot that has the carve-out, I saw something that said wall or something.
Yes.
Under that.
Yes, so the town, so part of our waiver conditions, or even it wasn't a waiver condition, we're requiring to preserve the town's tee that they, that the, um, applicant can construct a wall, a brick, a, a, a block wall to carve out our tee. As we know, that the previous owner's family requiring that we keep that tee unusable, uh, you know, uh, open for them, we're not doing that for this, so whoever buys, whoever, whoever buys this lot knows there's a wall there that obstructs their view to preserve our tee, so we have land behind this property. So we're requiring a wall to be installed.
Okay.
It's, it's not, is it a straight perpendicular, like when I go there to look now, because of their fence, it's sort of like a curved wall?
No, it has, it, it, it has, it has a little bit of an angle to it.
It does have an angle.
Yeah, and don't forget, on the corners, it, it does curve, because no lot in town on a corner owns the peak. They only own, own the curb.
There's a curvature to the lot.
Is that good, Councilman Einstein?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, with that, any other council comments? Roll call please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, before we adjourn, Alex, you wanna go through some dates?
Yeah, um, only one date. I just need you to decide, because you, you didn't decide at the last meeting, what you'd like for your August meeting to be. We're proposing that it be on August, uh, thirtieth, so that gives everyone time to return back to town. That does mean that in September, like, a, a week later, you're gonna have another council meeting. But to give you guys more time for your travels, because August has five weeks, we're asking it to be August thirtieth.
What about, since we're voting on August twenty-third, that's the election?
Yeah, I don't have meaning under the council, of, uh, the elections, because the election goes to seven, your meeting starts at six.
Okay. So you want it the thirtieth, is that good with everybody?
I'm, I'm gonna.
I already have it entered.
I'm gonna be, as I told you guys last time, I'm gonna be unavailable.
The problem is if we move it to the twenty-third, you have just removed.
No, I understand, I understand, so the thirtieth? Town council meeting, uh, it's in my council.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be attending by Zoom, but.
By the way, the mayor missed, oh, we do not present budget at the August meeting. We.
No, I, I know, I know. But we have a bunch of items to go through in August.
Yeah, but not the budget, but not the budget.
Alex, can we, can I just take a, make sure I take a look at the ordinance on the docks, I guess for the second reading?
The dock ordinance has already passed, there is no more reading on the docks.
Why, has he redrafted?
No, it's done.
I mean, you're good with that?
Not joined.
Okay, you'll send it to me.
Who's approved?
Yeah, but the seawall, there, just refer, there is no more bringing back seawall, seawall's done, it's dead, it's a, it's a movement issue.
Okay.
Okay, with that, everyone in agreement, well, that's fine.
So the thirtieth has to be PM.
Okay, guys, since we're not gonna have a council meeting prior to the election, it's imperative, okay, that, I know a lot of us are going away and stuff, but it's imperative to talk to the residents, educate them if they have any questions on the bond, because they do have.
Let me caution you on what the mayor is asking you to do.
So, wait, sh- shouldn't?
All I'm saying is educate, town manager.
Let me just make sure, I'm gonna make sure, because I don't want anyone to be in trouble. So, under a new law that passed by, that was approved by the governor, what this council can only do is explain your action.
Educate.
So you can talk about the, what the bond question is.
Educate.
Be careful in how you do so, because you don't want someone to find a challenge on how you educate them. So you can tell them what the bond question is, you cannot seek approval or disapproval on that item.
So I'm, I'm not quite sure what I'm saying that might trigger that.
So the law says that, uh, uh, the person or the governor, don't say the person, says that you can teach them what you voted on, you could say, this is the bond question, here it is, factual, but you cannot advocate for or against.
Let, let me, you know what?
No, we have to.
Town, hold on, hold on.
I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you a brief, brief memo, I'm gonna send you a brief memo that explains the limitation, but what I, um, what, um, you could certainly say that this is what the council's supporting, this is what we voted on, and, and, you know.
Yes, and you, and you can voice your opinion, correct?
Yes, but, but let me, let, let me, I, I will.
Alex is shaking his head.
If it's different, I'm gonna, I'll give you a, I'm gonna give you a short memo on what you can and can't do anyway, okay?
So.
So we're clear.
Gets back to my education.
But, but we can, but we can a minimum say this council is supporting this.
The council has approved this bond question for you to consider. It's the way that we have read it, and it's what the guidance that the attorneys gave us, so.
Or we can.
Stuff is changing, I need to know, because I've been a lot of money on advertising, that I was told I couldn't advocate for or against.
You're s- you're spending money.
Yeah, but it also says or an individual, it's, the, the, the law says.
No, no, hang on, okay, okay.
Steve, do you have anything to add?
No.
But I, I do wanna say, education is different, educating the residents on what the bond is, what we're offering, okay, what the, what the bond's gonna get, and also that it's not affecting, uh, we, we don't plan on raising the millage rate, okay? That's imperative, when we're, when we're talking about that, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands.
It's everything you said, plus it's reading, yes.
No, a memo, Steve's gonna send us a memo of what we can and cannot say, but can you send us a memo of just the bullet points? Uh, we will be consistent with what the new requirement of the law is, and I'd just like to remind everyone that, that we are still being on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other comments, any other questions?
Yeah, real quickly.
Ben, what?
Is there any, um, is there gonna be an email going out by the town? What, I know there was going to be some type of, um, like we call publicity, advertisement, whatever you wanna call it, what is the
The town, the town will be sending out an educational piece that informs the residents what the question is, but not seeking their support in favor or against.
So it has to be, uh, it has to be an objection, because I guess that's what we're hearing, yeah, and I would be interested to get.
We have to, we have to be, we have to be.
What one can say.
We, we, the town have to be factual in what we present.
It's an education process.
So Steve was asking us.
Right.
I, I'm gonna send it to you because, uh, I think it, it, I get it. I'll, I'll send you a memo and tells you exactly what you can do and not do.
Perfect, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn, any a second?
I have a question, because the letter said that we're gonna do some discussion about the bond referendum, I'd like to have that discussed.
That's not true, no, no, Mayor Adicott.
Guys, hold on, hold on.
Mayor Adicott, a- and I, again, I, I caution you and Miss Adicott to be very careful when you make statements, because, because in, in no circumstance did the, did the public notice talk about a bond referendum. Now, Mayor Singer sent out a separate notice, a separate letter, where he spoke in his letter that the mayor, as mayor, he was supporting the geo-bond, and that the council took action, and invited people to come to tonight's meeting to speak about the assessment. That's what his letter stated. Mayor, and, and, somebody give me a copy of the letter.
Getting it right now.
Okay, um, but at no point did the mayor ever state, or did I state, or did the, or did it state that there would be a geo-bond discussion tonight?
Well, so there's not gonna be another council meeting before the election, when would the public be able to discuss the geo-bond?
It, it, now here's what the letter says verbatim, if you have questions, I encourage you to attend the June fourteenth council meeting to learn about the bond referendum, which the mayor spoke at length about, uh, prior to the election on August twenty-third, if you cannot attend the meeting, just tune in and watch on bond. So we met the obligations of the letter.
And also, Mayor Adicott, in the, uh, in the bagels on the beach, we spoke about, I spoke about the bond uh, referendum and the bond vote, and had questions and answers, there was opportunities for the residents to speak, Ben.
Right, but it wasn't on the record.
It was.
And I'm asking, I'm asking for my comments to be made on the record, because the letter indicates here, if you have any questions, I encourage you to attend the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two town council meeting, well, I have questions, so that means I'm not gonna be able to have the questions answered.
So, with, with your, I'll, I'll let you answer, hold on, I'll let you ask the questions. So, with all due respect, ask, fire away, what are your questions? Guys, if I can have five more minutes?
Has, has the ballot, has the ballot for the referendum that's gonna be voted on August two thirds already been prepared?
Steve.
Yeah.
Yes.
And does the ballot have a menu, so that you don't have to be all or nothing for seven million, it could be three million?
No, it's a yes or no question.
No, it's a for bond or against?
Or against question.
So the residents don't have a choice, they either go all in or nothing, is that right?
Correct.
It's a seven million dollar bond, similar to what we did the first time.
Yeah, but I, I mean, you're talking about different projects to fund with this bond, why wouldn't we be able to say we want this project versus that one, and reduce the amount of the bond, because it does have a negative impact overall, even though it's coming from ad lorm taxes, you can only borrow so much against the ad lorm taxes, and we already have, as you know, one bond still outstanding for another fifteen years. So, if you put another one on top of it, there's, you're, you're gonna reach a limit where you can't borrow anymore, and you're gonna have to assess residents, a special assessment for any overruns.
Mayor Adicott, this is why, this is why it's important for our residents to participate in all of our meetings, and not just selective meetings, because you are incorrect. So, I, I, the, this is, in the April council meeting, we had our, we had our financial advisors come in to educate our council as to our debt capacity and our capacity and our budget. We are more than confident that with the eight point four mils, based on our, based on our financial assessments, that there's enough capacity for this bond, and so you're misrepresenting the position once again, because you didn't participate in the other meetings.
Well, I, I understand you're saying that you think you have enough with the eight point four mils coming in. I'm, my question is, why weren't the residents given a choice of a lesser amount?
Because, because it's all, we're doing these projects, these are the projects that we selected in.
I can answer that, I can answer that.
Go, go on.
It was very clear, because this town council was elected to represent its constituents, and it feels that the bond referendum at seven million dollars for the project that they have identified is the question that they wish to pose to its voters, not a selection, it is up to this council to decide that.
Well, no, I really think it's up to the public, because if you're spending the public's money.
It's not, so this council's asking the, this council's asking the public a very specific question, um, with a very specific action to be ta- taken. If the public wishes to go against this council and vote this referendum down, they may choose to do so.
And again, that doesn't mean that we're going to, if it passes, that doesn't mean that we're going to take out seven million.
Exactly.
We may select that a later date, Mr., uh, Mayor Adicott, we may select that a, a, a later date, not to do all those projects. But we wanna have the funding available. We can take up to seven million dollars if you read the question.
Alright, so what you're doing is you're, you're establishing a line of credit for seven million, but you're not committing to spend all seven million, is that right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, understood, that's all.
Any other questions?
I'm committed to item number one, is that correct? What is item number one?
We, we, we are committing as part of this bond referendum